All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Berlin, Boyles and Regional School Committee to order. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. Your image and/or voice may be broadcast. Let's all stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public comment. Don't think anyone is here for public comment. Do you have any communications? Did anyone have anything they'd like to share as far as communications?
Okay, Brittany from WBAC who does our subcommittee meetings. And then she emailed me today and said that Berlin, Berlin, he relaxes with willing to semi-permanently donate a mixer so it would enable us to have multiple microphones during the meeting to improve audio. So that's something I wanted to put on a future agenda of the text of committee that I just want to mention on today.
That's great. So I have not had a chance to read this, I'm sorry. So they're just like straight out willing to donate this?
Yeah, maybe grab it back for like a town meeting or something, but semi-permanently donate it.
All right, so I don't think we have to vote on that. I think we can, right? No, they didn't. There was an email she forwarded. I don't know if permanently loan to the school committee. All right, so we'll figure out, Jess, if we have to, I'll look into that, see if we have to vote, or if we can just accept that for our next meeting. That'd be great, because the next meeting is actually the initial budget. Okay, so anything else before we move on? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? All in favor? I'm not a part of that motion, passes. All right, so we're gonna do things a little out of order tonight. Well, first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna have our MCAS update. So we had the ELA and science last meeting. Tonight, we're gonna hear from Ms. Francine Gleason on the MCAS math part for Tohoto.
Francine, do you want to cheer?
No, it's, it actually hurts more to sit down, like, to get up and down. So I'm just gonna stand until anybody, okay, whoever asked me that, so thank you. So you all have a copy of my MCAS presentation from last month. I'm sorry that I couldn't make it here, but it was a medical reason. And so I'm not gonna go through that because I was asked to just highlight the successes and to talk about areas of improvement for the math department. So that's what I'm gonna focus on. I did actually make something just to keep myself, my thought process going. So I'll start with successes, okay? We are recognized as a blue ribbon school, which is a very impressive honor, okay? It means that we are supporting our students academically, socially, emotionally, okay, especially our high need students, all right? Nine out of 21 of our high need students in the 10th grade are meeting or exceeding expectations, which, when I showed the results to the math department, they were floored because our expectation after they took the exam was for that not to be the situation, okay? Only one student was not meeting, and that one student had a big attendance issue. I believe they missed about 44 days of school. So, you know, 44 days of school, 44 days of curriculum trying to take a math MCAS is troubling. And so I don't know if they've retaken it, not yet.
At the end of this year.
At the end of this year, okay. So my hope for that person, if we talk about areas of improvement, is I'm willing, and I've always been willing, to spend one-on-one time with these students that don't pass the exam. I've always done that. And I also offer the MCAS remediation course at the end of the year. I always email Carol and I say, where's the money? Can I do this? Can we put something aside? And I, you know, I put a schedule together, and I usually have a lot of kids that are interested in this. I actually got an email this week from a parent asking me, when is it starting? Are you doing anything? Because parents are interested. I told them to keep an eye out for it in the Tohoto newsletter and that hopefully down the road, we'd have something that we'd be able to offer them. We typically do it about eight to 12 weeks before the exam. Sometimes there's not enough money to hold it for that length of time. I think the money comes from Title I. I'm not sure where else we could even find the money for it. But students that I have had, that have been to my MCAS remediation class, have passed that exam. I spend a lot of one-on-one time with them. I usually have one para that stays with me. That para that I usually have is fantastic, Mrs. Ritchie. She usually takes on the position, she takes it very seriously. And I have so many kids that come back to me after they get their results thanking me for holding the class. And that just brings me great joy because they come into the class and they're nervous and they're worried. They know, you know, what's gonna happen if they don't pass the exam, and so they really just want the opportunity to do well. Students at that level that want the help, they just wanna do well, they wanna pass it, and I'm gonna get into something about how I feel about the younger grades out. But students at the 10th grade level need to have that class, okay? So this is really fantastic, okay? These results are fantastic. The test is not designed, and has never been designed, for any school to meet 100% needing and exceeding. It's just not made that way. They redesign the test all the time so that that doesn't happen. Because if it happens that we're all meeting 100%, there's no need to have a test. There's no need to change the standards. There's no need to look at what we're teaching, okay? So I think that we're doing fantastic. We're very proud of this particular group of students. These students had some courses at home during COVID learning that were detrimental to the content on the test. So a lot of work went in from the math department. At the beginning of the year, we tested every single class. We looked at the data to see where they were missing vital information or standards because of how we had COVID learning, and then we had our, what did you call it, that year after?
Oh, the hybrid.
The hybrid, the hybrid learning, okay? And both of those things really showed up in this particular group of kids. So we were really proud of their results. All grades performed above the state expectations, and the eighth grade saw their biggest increase, a growth increase of 37% above what they normally had in years past. However, if I start to go into a very lengthy conversation, the student growth percentile, which I'm not gonna do, student growth percentile, they're looking at students and they're looking at their growth compared to another group of students. They're not looking at these particular students compared to themselves, okay? So if we look at just these students and where they were in the eighth grade, which we do as a department, we print out how they did in the eighth grade, how they did in the seventh grade, how they did in the sixth grade, and we say, okay, look at them in the 10th grade, and there is usually tremendous growth and students are very successful on that exam. I feel like students in the younger grades, and this is my own personal opinion, are overly tested, and I think that a lot of them, especially in the eighth grade, that's just an age where they sit down to take this test, and they have said this out loud as sophomores, they don't take it seriously. 10th graders know that it's a high stakes exam. They need it for graduation. Eighth graders don't know that. So they look at it as, okay, this is another test that they're making me take. It also is a very difficult test. Some of us as teachers feel like the eighth grade exam is actually harder than the 10th grade exam by a long shot. So we have done a few things in the department looking at that, and what we've done is we redesigned the pathway, and this is all in the stuff that you see in my prior presentation where I go through, what is the math department doing, okay? And I just lost my train of thought.
The pathway.
Oh, the pathway. So we changed the pathway so that students were no longer capable of taking an Algebra I honors course in the seventh grade. That needed to be changed because students were really missing out on content that was on the eighth grade exam because it's like they skipped pre-algebra. They didn't have any of that content. So they didn't have the skills that they needed to do really well in the MCAS. So by changing the pathway and having students take Algebra I starting in the eighth grade, we've already seen big changes. Teachers are noticing already that next year, because this year we do not have a seventh grade advanced class at all. We didn't have one student that we felt was prepared for a seventh grade advanced course, but next year we do, okay? Next year, the middle school teachers have taken a look and they do feel that they have a comfortable maybe 15 to 20 that might be able to move on to a seventh grade advanced class next year. Now, what does that mean? Well, we have to cater to not only the kids that have needs, high needs, special needs, but we also have to cater to those kids that are also high level. We need to cater to everyone. I have always been a big proponent, Mr. Campbell will tell you, Emerson has me. I feel like students that need help deserve the help, but I also feel like students that are high level deserve to be able to have the opportunity to show their skill as well. Because of that, for many years, I taught six courses. I taught six periods because I did not want those students to not have the ability to take Calc III before they went on to college, okay? I didn't want them to skip a whole year of learning calculus or having the ability to play around with calculus a little bit, so I've always offered that. Granted, it's a very small class. This year I have five. Some years I have one or two, some I have three. One year I had 12, okay? It depends on how many students are taking AP Calc AB and AP Calc BC and wanna continue that path. So if they're taking it as a sophomore or freshman or senior year and they wanna continue on that path, I feel that it is important to be able to offer to them, no matter what the class size is, okay? So anyways, we redesigned the pathway, we are seeing great results with that.
Can we?
Go ahead, sure.
I think Mike had a question. I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt, but I don't wanna get too far away and then go on to something else. This question relates to something you already said.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do, if you want to do questions.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead, yeah, as long as it's on time.
Right, I'm just gonna cut my ear because it's like I'm underwater. I'm still recovering.
So, well, before I ask my question, I learned last month that if I ask a question, sometimes you take your day off. So I wanted to just let you know, one, I'm not asking this because I think anything negative about you or any other teacher.
Okay.
Or the program. I just wanna know, I wanna know how the committee can help solve whatever issues need to be solved.
Yeah.
Based on what it all seems to call it.
Yeah.
That's the high needs, 21 high needs students. What makes them high needs?
Well, they're a mixture of students that have IEPs, students that are L students coming from other countries, students that speak other languages. Our population from the past few years has grown from, I don't know the exact numbers, I just know that right now we had 21 that took it for this test that were in the high needs category. And if you find actually all of that information on the MCAS website, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I can, can. So the high needs population is constituted by students whose first language is not English, English language learners, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities. And that goes into a formula that produces high needs. For the end of the 22, 23 school year, that was 31.3% for the disability.
So disabilities, I can understand that, we challenge you with a test like this.
Yeah.
The English learners, if this test were given in their native language, would they perform better?
I think they would, but they can't take it in their native language.
They can't take it in their native language. So how are they getting to 10th grade and not functional enough in English to be able to take the test that they're being required to take in order to graduate from school?
How are they?
What can we do for this?
We, I don't know if there's really anything we can do because we have students who are coming directly over from a country not speaking the language that are being, you know, that are enrolled in ninth grade and 10th grade.
So they're coming from a country that doesn't speak English today, on Tuesday, and on Wednesday they're in Berlin or Boyles and they're at Tohoto, and they're being expected to pass the top grade test?
They are, expected to meet, yeah.
Yes, essentially. I believe that there is a little rule with L students that they don't have to take it immediately that year, they can defer it one year. But sometimes that's not sufficient time to, you know, to imagine that kind of becoming proficient in a language.
I've done that, and it's not easy.
Right.
I agree.
So it is, you know, it is a challenge. I think also to speak to the areas of high needs. Our largest group that is increasing is our low socioeconomic group. That is increasing at a greater rate than any other group.
So how is that group defined? That was my next question. So low socioeconomic.
It is defined through the income level of the household. And oftentimes, and that's a state, you know, that's, you know, state identified, you know, people who aren't fully identified for free and reduced lunch in that category.
Is there an issue identifying those particular kids with kids who aren't performing on these tests? Because I don't personally understand how, I understand how the home's income might give you additional advantages, but if you're a student in the school, how does the fact that you have low income at home mean that you can't perform on the test?
So that's an excellent question. I think that, and, you know, if you've had these students in your class, you can certainly understand, sometimes these students are going home and they're working. They're working to actually support their family. So some students are working probably 30 to 40 hours a week during the school and we are on the weekends and providing support for the family. So they're not able to maybe do traditional homework or stay after school for after-school sessions. Sometimes they're going home to an unstructured environment because parents have to work maybe second or third shift. Those shift differentials can make a huge difference in a household income. So you don't have, you know, it could be a very loving home, but, you know, students, and I think there's a very common misconception that, you know, we need to stay home with the small children, which is important. I know myself that it's equally important to have structure and guidance for middle school and high school students. And when that structure isn't there, it's really easy to get tied up on your phone or on, you know, online. And so all of a sudden, I know that I can be online for what appears to be a minute, and there's a time warp of an hour.
Yeah, it's a, oh, it's really.
You know, so I think all of those conditions, which are defined by low socioeconomic.
So I'm just curious, like, I experienced a lot of that stuff myself, a lot of when you just.
Oh, absolutely, and I, as I did.
When they're in the school for six hours, right, six and a half hours a day. There are some people who argue that homework doesn't actually help. So how are those six and a half hours in the day not enough?
So sometimes people.
Or, and not, how is it not enough? And what can we do through policy, budget, or superintendent?
Right.
To change it? Because to have 30 to 40% of kids not meeting or perform at that level because of money at home, they're still in the building six and a half hours a day. I can understand attendance, I can understand.
I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't mean to stop you, but I don't know where you're getting 30 to 40% not being able to. You're talking about the.
I was talking about all, all of those.
Just the high needs or a lot of the whole?
The whole thing, each different grade.
Great question. I think the way Francine learned, I think that she was talking about the Title I work that we do in the school with students has been helpful, and also things like she's doing after school, additional help, I think to be able to do more of that during the day and after school would be really helpful, people would fund those opportunities for students to come and get extra help would be huge. The other piece that Lisa did mention, I think this is really important, Julie will speak to something she's gonna talk about later, exposure of these students to opportunities outside of school, exposure to field trips, resources, going to museums, having a chance to see more of the world and see everything we've got. I used to teach in a district where the children had not left that town to come to Wester.
I mean, sure, sure.
More of those.
But if they can't do that after school, is it gonna take care of young kids or they're gonna go to work or whatever? So are you bringing anything like that into the?
So I think that's an excellent point. I can address also, Sally is heading a scheduling committee, and we're looking at opportunities to adjust our schedules so that there are more opportunities for tier two intervention. You know, tier one intervention is all the intervention that we provide in the classroom as good educators. Tier three is our more targeted intervention that happens with our IEP, Special Education Services. That tier two is the kind of money waters where there are kids that might kind of drop through the, you know, the holes and the cracks. And so really creating time within the schedule where we can meet those students' needs, where there's time in the day to do that. Because the, you know, the 50 minutes of class time is very structured and has to move, you know, to get this material and providing extra support and time within the school day, this is valuable discussions that we're having in the scheduling committee.
So I guess my question, just the 30 to 40% was just when I looked at your core, eight, 10, all the grades, anywhere within that range is what was under the meeting expectations? That's where I, but to your point and to.
So, so I just also wanna add, like, not meeting doesn't mean that they're not meeting. Like, that's like your C student.
It doesn't mean they're failing, yeah.
They're not failed.
Right, I understand that.
Okay, they're just not your A and B student, and not everybody is an A and B student in math addicts.
I was saying, I was just trying to explain to mom and dad why their kids not meeting expectations and what we're gonna do to try to help them get there, but. So I guess to leave some point, to carry on to the budget point that we're talking about later, why are we not putting in more, more staff, more programs, more? I noticed one of your slides here talks about Delta and, what is it, Delta?
Desmos.
Desmos, yeah.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna get into a little bit more about what you can do for an area of improvement.
How many things do we manage that? Can we put more of this into a budget? Are there other programs like that? Let's do something instead of just talking all about, we're having discussions about this and we're planning to plan the next program that's gonna plan how to fix the plan.
So Francine, would you like to address?
Yes, I would like to, actually. Okay, so one of the things that we look at in the math department is scheduling class sizes for our CP classes, okay? Specifically Algebra I and Geometry. Algebra I and Geometry are the focus content of the MCAS exam. We currently have two high school Algebra I CP courses with 25 students each, and in each class, approximately half the class are on an IEP, a 504, and we have one para in the class. Now, those numbers are high. In order to manage students that are high needs and they're struggling, having that one para, I mean, it's a great help, but with that many students on an IEP and those many, that many students to service in one class, when the entire classroom, every seat is filled, it's very difficult for any teacher.
Are these numbers typical across the state, or is?
I can't hear.
Are these numbers typical across the state, or is our district higher?
I think what happened in our district was we need another math teacher. We have a math teacher who only teaches three courses because he's the athletic director, okay? So when we lost that math teacher, we lost 0.4 of a teacher. We lost two classes. But since then, things have changed, okay? We currently have multiple teachers teaching six courses. I'm one of them, okay? Not only in my teaching six, I consider myself teaching seven because I have two separate sections of personal finance that I took on this year, otherwise the students would not be able to have taken it. We have an eighth grade math elective that we had to cancel because we didn't have a teacher to teach it. And financial literacy is gonna be required for students graduating 20 or 25 or later. We're not gonna have a teacher to teach that. And right now, if you think about it, so we lost 0.4 when we lost teacher to AD, but we also lost the eighth grade class, so consider that 0.6. Then we also now have this financial literacy class that we have to offer. I'm considering that 0.8 for the amount of time and work that has to go into that. So we really do need the addition of a math teacher, and we've needed that since that position changed a few years ago when Peter Mackey left. The position changed. Mr. Mackey used to have four classes. So when it went down to three classes, that made it difficult. I'm just losing that one. But again, the dynamics of the school have changed. We have more enrollment, so we have more students. And without that extra math teacher, I'm teaching six, another math teacher is teaching six. We had to get rid of an elective, an English teacher is teaching six, but we had to change an eighth grade elective to an English elective because they're not a math teacher. So if we had this extra math teacher, we'd have someone who could take on the responsibility of adding something, adding a course that's a remediation course, like a specific course for these kids that need help. And there's many things that we can do, but we don't have, we don't have the teacher.
I don't want teachers and athletic directors on the plan.
Yeah, right, that's in the budget, right?
But what about her person?
Yeah, she's at the 0.4, right?
Can I mention all the par- professional support, all the IBS?
Right? Well, the AD has to, the AD position has to be approved, so the AD position is full-time, so then we have the full-time math teacher.
Our typical CP classes back, you know, in the day before all of this happened and losing a body to help teach, usually those classes, we were able to keep this at 15 or under. Typically 12 to 15 students max in that class. And you say, okay, well, what's the difference between that and 25? It's a big difference, okay? It allows that teacher the opportunity to give more one-on-one time to every single student in the 48 minutes that they have in the room. They get that extra help, and that's important. We have another person who can stay after school and help with the remediation class.
So regardless of the size of the classroom, it looks like with the IEP students, whatever numbers your classes are, you're gonna have probably half the class is on an IEP. So in addition to the teacher, why not the additional pairs? If you land one par professional to go, is that her classroom or for that whole class?
Yeah, one para, one teacher in that one class of 25 students.
All right, and then they rotate with another.
Yeah, well, then there's another, there's two Algebra I classes at the moment that are both CP classes.
And they both have par professional support.
And they both have one para.
Is it the same? Are these the same people, or are they different pairs?
I think she has the same para this time.
Okay, not that, not that, that's my question.
In part for both.
If we got another teacher and then we split that into three classes, would we also need additional pairs, or again, that same person?
No, because the classes would then be smaller and more manageable in order to give the kids the help they need. So you wouldn't, well, you wouldn't have 12 in the class that were high needs, you might have, you might have five or six. You might be able to cut it in half, you might be able to cut it into two-thirds, which is still more manageable.
So we wouldn't need that, actually.
Yeah.
So do you, if you, if we made a, so right now, Julie made a good point, we have a part-time math teacher.
Yeah.
That position was full-time, would that cover these needs you're talking about? Or I guess I should ask both of you, Lisa, you know, would that cover the, everything, the financial literacy and, would that cover, because it really, it made the budget, I think, to Julie's point, it's not one full-time head, it's making that your teacher that, you know, whatever, if that person or somebody different, that role would be full-time. So it's actually adding 0.6 of a teacher, it's not adding a full-time teacher.
Yeah, they are adding a full-time athletic director, so it's one full.
Well, then, no, you're adding 0.4 athletic, you're only adding one body for an athletic director and math teacher.
I don't know if you went to the school, but six employees on.
No, do you not?
No, I, 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 absolutely. All right, I know what you're saying, absolutely, and I.
She's saying she needs another body.
Right, another body, right.
But that's.
Because you're.
But no.
You're saying she needs half body, we need a full body.
But that's all we have in the budget, is what I'm saying, is half a body.
We have one, we have one person doing two jobs, we need another person that has two people doing two jobs.
Yes. Yeah, but I don't know, that's what I'm, I'm, you need to clarify what's in the budget because I don't think that's in the budget.
What, what's?
A full-time math teacher and a full-time athletic director.
No, that's, all right, we'll go back to that. I don't think that's what's in the budget right now.
Well, it's not.
Oh, it's not, it is.
So in the budget, so teacher and budget and full-time athletic director.
That's what I thought.
But the money is. What it depends on is who becomes the athletic director, right?
Right, oh, that, that's the missing piece, right?
That's up, that's up to you guys, but as far as budget goes, it's.
We still have two heads in the budget, yes. We're adding two heads, yes. Gotcha, yes. I thought we were adding 0.6 and 0.8.
I didn't know what you were thinking.
All right, so it's 0.6 math teachers as being added to the budget. Yes. Yeah, I didn't realize that. Okay, fine, is that? Okay, fine, is that, I, no. All right, oh, sorry, that's what you said?
No.
No, no, we're not, we're not adding 1.6. Right now, we have one person doing two jobs.
0.6 in athletic and then 0.4.
The proposal is that there are two positions now, one full-time athletic director, one full-time math. So instead of teaching three classes, they'll be teaching five classes, which gives that math teacher the opportunity to teach financial literacy. And then maybe another CP.
Yeah, because we also, we also lost a seventh grader.
Positions in the main hall.
That was the other class that's in the high school now.
No. All right, 0.6 in math teacher, 0.4 athletic director in the budget, that's the additional fund for the budget.
Yep, all right, that's what I thought, okay. All right.
I just have one quick question on the remediation course, if that's a must, is that tracing or can I just go to the budget now?
We pay for it, we pay for it out of channel one, you know, for the instructor.
Yeah.
Students will pay it all.
Right, so every year it's, it's in there regardless.
I don't know where it is in the budget, I just know that I'm asking you to keep it there.
That's what I'm saying.
Because it really is, it really is helpful. And I do have a lot of interest in it, you know, when we start, when we do have the opportunity and we know about it ahead of time. If we know about it ahead of time, we're gonna get more students on board to come in for it. But they have to know ahead of time. It's really hard for them to schedule, you know, their sports, their lives. And, and you know, Lisa used to do the bio, the biology remediation class. We would talk to each other about our schedules and we would try and make sure that we managed it with their sports, with all of their activities. And we would pick the best days so we could get the most students to attend. And I always made it a point to tell the students that even if they came to one a week or if they came to four out of the 12, it's still beneficial because they're gonna learn something that they didn't know previously that would be on the test. And also a big part of taking this test and the way it's been designed now online, that the questions are multiple questions. So if you have, and it's reading, students have to be able to read really well, pull apart the question really well, and answer the question. And I feel like any question that we, and we've looked at these questions in the department, any question that we ever perform low on at all is usually a question that asks for multiple responses. It'll say, pick two things out of these five. And they pick one and they get the one right, but they didn't pick two. Or they picked one and they got one wrong. Also, on a lot of the, a lot of the questions like that, if you pick one of them right and one of them wrong, you get it wrong. You don't get it half right, you get it wrong, it's wrong. They don't give you credit for the part that you got right. So having the students have the opportunity to stay after school and learn how to also use the tools to take it online, it's helpful. It's a big, it's a big deal.
All right, thank you, was that everything?
That was everything.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. Do you have last question?
Okay.
On the other end of this, for the kids who are performing really well, are there any kids who?
Well, right now.
More challenge or are we doing?
I'm giving them challenge. I have a class right now of five. There's two girls, three boys, and they are learning multi-variable calculus. So they've already taken Calc PC, but they want to pursue careers in either physics or mathematics. So I give them the opportunity to, you know, pick the content, it's called applications of calculus, and I feel like they are challenged. If you came into my room on any given day in that class, you, your eyes would glaze over sometimes at the discussions that they're having. It's, it's pretty fantastic. So I mean, we have that opportunity. We don't have like courses that they can take besides that. Coming down the road, there's an AP pre-calculus course that College Board is now offering. So an AP pre-calculus course is another course that the math department would really like to add because when students take an AP pre-calculus course, we'll know exactly how prepared they are for taking AP Calculus, AB or BC. And it also just gives them more opportunity again, because a lot of students, when they're leaving high school, pre-calculus is the only math class that they do have to take as a freshman. And then they're done with their math maps. Some kids have to leave and they take statistics and they're done with their math maps. It depends on what they wanna major in. But AP pre-calculus coming down the road, that is another class that we would like to offer.
Math team is another opportunity, math team is another opportunity.
Oh, math team, I have a freshman in a varsity math team. I had a varsity math meet a few weeks ago, my classroom was full, I have pictures on my phone. I think I had probably 30 kids stay for a math meet.
I was gonna say, because through your report here, the number of kids exceeding, at the exceeding level, seems like they would want more challenges.
Yeah, well, their challenge, they, yeah, those are the students that always love to show up for a math meet.
Yeah, to hear there's only five in that class though is a little.
What's that?
To hear that there's only five in that class that you were mentioning is a little.
Well, these are five students that have exhausted the curriculum in school. They've taken the AP math class.
Yeah.
They're, they're done. So I offered this.
There's a lot more that seem like they can handle it.
Yeah.
But maybe there is something else or.
Well, in order to actually take it, they have to have completed Calc BC.
Oh, okay.
That's kind of like their golden opportunity to further it more. You have to get to that point, you know, you haven't exhausted the curriculum unless you've taken AP Stats and AP BC Calc.
And to do that, you have to track early, start early.
Yeah, yeah. And even though, and even though we changed the pathway in the middle school so that they're not starting as early as they used to, except that we have, I used to have a lot of sophomores and juniors take the BC exam, and those were the students that actually always did the best because they just had their heart in it, whereas the seniors took it because they wanted it on their resume. But the sophomores and the juniors wanted it because they really loved math and they really wanted to learn it and they would really dwell on the exam. Those kids now are taking Algebra One in the seventh grade, but they do have the opportunity to double up. So they can double up on math, they can take Geometry and Algebra Two. Those are two classes that can be taken together in the same year because you don't need to have one to take the other. So those students that would double up would be the students that would make it to, you know, pre-calc honors and then AP, AB or BC calc.
So there is opportunity for those that wanna do it, it's just a bit of a.
Yeah.
Scheduling too is tricky.
Yeah, the scheduling is really hard, just because it's a small school and, you know, sometimes if they do that, yeah, sometimes if they do that, they have a really hard time scheduling something else like chemistry or English. Like, it, it's just really hard to have that happen in your schedule. And if they're a sophomore, sophomore English just happens to be held on the same time as AP Calc PC. So, you know, they're, they're having a hard time just scheduling.
All right, well, thank you, that's great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And thank you for letting me know for your appreciation.
Yeah, all right. Emerson, do you wanna take away?
Sure. Hi, so last time we talked was right before break, so not as much has happened, but we are already moving back to the very beginning things. I would say like we talk to the students right now, then they will lunch. From what we have, everyone's loving it from what I've heard, which is great, which is like bigger portions, better quality for options. Something that makes it even better is that obviously the juniors have to do the civics and action project every year for curriculum. And I know last year specifically, two or three groups that were their main focus was school lunch. So everyone's projects, kind of, everyone's talking about, like, oh, I think it would actually work. But yeah, um, and then we're doing Disenchanted, it's a musical that the dog club is putting on. I know every year they try to put on a play, but sometimes it doesn't have as much attention, not as many kids. But from what I've heard this year, it's very big interest in singing, dancing and acting. And I know, I think some of them had a little bit to do with like picking what musical they were doing, which they were all really excited about. So more than that. And then for clubs, ski club started, basketball's been doing very well, boys and girls. And bomb planning has opened, Julian chucks it in Sterling.
Very great, sounds like high school is a lot of fun. Wish I could go back. All right, thank you very much, please feel free to take off if you want.
Thank you.
Okay, so Nancy, do you wanna get set up next?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
Oh, you don't have to do that?
No.
All right, um, you know, we skipped my chair report, I had one thing I wanted to say to everybody really quick. So the only thing I wanted to update everyone on is that we do have the annual report for the town of Doyleston. I don't know, is Berlin new one as well? I haven't seen that one. It's due on, what? Yeah, I'd love to reach out to them, but it is due on the 15th, so I will be working on that and letting you know. It's not anything we need to vote on, it's just updating information, it has nothing, I don't have any really weird.
Usually we do.
Vote on the last year.
Did we vote on it?
We usually do a writing, but the superintendent does something in there, school community.
Did they ask you? I got an email recently.
Yeah.
And they said they wanted, they use a draft. All right, I'll get some more information on that. If we have to vote, then we will vote on it on our February 27th meeting and I will not submit it. I'll go back and look at that. I remember you asked me for help on it last year, but I didn't think we voted on it.
We do, yeah, we had discussion on it, for the Berlin one.
Okay, yeah, Boyleston, I mean, different, yeah. All right, okay, I've not heard anything from Berlin, Boyleston just asked, and it's just a, you know, felling in information. So I'll look into that and I'll let you guys know for next time. And that was all I got. All right, so Nancy, we'll roll to you and then we'll do subcommittee updates before we, um. Oh, are you? Okay, I'm good, do you wanna, do you wanna, are you ready to present or I didn't wanna keep hanging here, here?
No, I mean, I don't wanna, you know, disrupt the podium or anything, can I?
But he does have two small little ones.
No, go ahead. You're, so you're presenting on Canada field trip?
Yes.
All right, so why don't we do that now and we'll do the vote and that way you can get in here, get out here.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I can appreciate having small kids at home that are not feeling well.
Sorry to be, you know.
It's okay.
So the idea is that Toronto students would be going on a four-day trip next year. Be over Mark Luther King Junior Weekend. So they'd be missing one day of school unless like this year, we have a PD that Friday, and students wouldn't be missing any school. But yeah, the, uh, there are two potential itineraries. One where they spend four days in Quebec City, another where they spend more or less a day and a half in Montreal, the rest of the time in Quebec City. So kind of in between those two, those two options. But yeah, Toronto used to have a trip like this annually or biannually. Former French teacher and the former band director used to have a Canada trip, I think, every other year. So it'd be great to, you know, bring that kind of thing back, particularly for the French students. But yeah, so the idea is, you know, Friday through Monday, more or less trying to give the overarching goals, give French students some, you know, immersive experience in French-speaking culture. You know, there, there are all sorts of traditional, so to speak, field trip activities like visiting historical sites and museums. But also there's a bunch of fun stuff mixed in here like tobogganing and dog sledding is in the itinerary as well. I haven't looked into that too much, but it sounds fun, you know? Taking part in the theater workshop where they learn about traditional Quebec legends and that kind of thing. So a whole lot of cultural stuff, but plenty of opportunities for them to use their language as well. Not just, you know, through the structured activities, but there's a lot of time for them to explore the city and, you know, navigate on their own and, you know, whatever, buy lunch, you know?
Great.
Yeah, that's more or less the gist of the, the gist of the trip.
Okay, that's awesome, sounds awesome. Does anyone have any questions?
It was a lot of fun. As I ended in a French teacher, I was coming to a cafe, ordered it French and learned about maple syrup making and.
That's, that's also a great app.
Yeah, and then we, yeah, learned about like the wars and whatever and then went on a little thing on the river.
Yeah, yeah.
Wonderful cultural experience.
Yeah, sure, it, it's really hard to provide that kind of opportunity to French students in particular around here. You know, Spanish students can find a lot more authentic experiences in Massachusetts. And, you know, yeah, gotta travel a bit to really get that immersive experience from French.
Who is organizing this trip? Who is the idea for it?
Uh, so this company is called Jump Street. And they seem like they, they really do an excellent job. I have a lot of information about insurance and that kind of thing. You know, they have on-call doctors from Johns Hopkins University and stuff, they have 24/7 call line. They're, they're really on top of, you know, they've thought of every in and out. But I believe Wes Boyleston uses this company for their Canadian trips that they had for a number of years, and that's how I heard about them. They plan to drive or fly? Uh, we drive, coach bus, yeah. And as far as cost goes, it's variable depending on how many students, you know, sign up. At the most expensive, it would be $1,400 a student. If we can get enough students to fill the bus, it would be between $850 and $950. But that's also a little bit variable depending on, you know, if we swap a couple of activities out, some activities are more expensive than others. This is my contact, this company said the whole trip is customizable, can, can, you know, augment, it has to be implemented or, you know, depending on what the kids want to do. That's more or less what we're looking at as far as cost. Is it financial help for sort of the French students or are they gonna be fundraising or? Yeah, fundraising is definitely part of, part of the situation. And I, the woman I've been speaking to at this company said she has all sorts of ideas, you know, kind of prepackaged stuff she could offer. But we could also, you know, come up with whatever we want to do at, at Toronto. But yeah, and I believe the final payment is due six days before the trip begins, so that would be mid-November. Um, so it's about 10 months between now and then. So if, you know, median a thousand dollars, it would work out to be a hundred bucks a month, you know, building up to that final payment.
And what are the ages of the kids, is it even higher or just higher?
So I theoretically just high schoolers enrolled in. So French students, I guess, would get priority, so to speak, seating, you know, on the bus on the trip rather. And I did a rough count of how many were interested, and I got like 55, more or less, that said they were interested, you know, preliminarily, hadn't talked to their parents about it. So that would likely, you know, diminish as far as, as far as French students go. To fill the bus, 40 students, I think, you know, is what we'd be looking at to get the lowest price. So it would likely open up to students outside of, you know, just once we're taking my class. But theoretically, this would be more of a high school-oriented trip.
Nine to 12 high school.
Nine to 12, nine to 12, yes.
Going up, up, upper level. I mean, just because of the.
Yeah, accountability, accountability, liability reasons, like your scheduled time if you're walking around the city and stuff like that, you know? And I do work primarily with the high school students, I know a lot of personal level, it's a bit more trust there. Not to say there isn't with my middle school students, but you know. Does that cost inclusion, passports and all that? Uh, passports are not included in that cost, no. And insurance actually is mandatory. I did a rough quote for this trip and depending on, you know, if you want a mid-tier package or the deluxe insurance package, both of which are like really comprehensive, it was like 50 to 75 dollars for insurance for the trip. So that would be, I guess, the additional passports, that would be the only additional cost would be the insurance.
Anyone else? Just wanted to say thank you for bringing these kinds of field trips back again, hoping that it's great to see these rolling and that you're willing to take the students.
Sure, happy to do it.
And I, I've asked, I've requested to intend to keep a close eye on kids.
It's gonna be very cold out there in the winter.
Yeah.
I want to see, when I was in high school, it'll be fun, it'll be a great time. It's great, thank you. It's great, thank you.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
All right, wait, no, we're gonna vote. We'll do your vote, so you'll have, you'll have your answer. All right, so could I have a vote? Did anyone have any other questions? Comments for discussion? Could I please have a motion to approve the Canada field trip over Martin Luther King Weekend in twenty twenty five? Second? Just Julie. All right, all in favor?
I am.
I'm an I as well, motion passes.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thanks. Sorry Nancy, I have to like, Nancy, sorry. All right, Nancy, for real, it's your turn now.
Okay.
And we have a vote on this too.
Yes. All right, so I'll try to go as quick as I can because I know I have a lot here. So, couple of quick updates. First update is I wanted to access the deficiency filing. That has been filing, we're filed with the Department of Revenue, we're waiting, uh, for it to come back, so they're reviewing it. The food services update on Whitsons, Whitsons. I was very happy to hear Emerson say that they're enjoying the food, better portions, better quality. When I wrote up this memo, we have had that for three days and in the three days, um, and, and it's been perceived very well. They're slowly introducing new items, so our food service staff can be trained. They have protein packs in elementary schools, they seem to be very popular. And Tohoto has the hamburgers, pizzas, salads in the Daily Mail. So they're trying to do a little more for a layout than they currently have. Overall, I think it's progressing in the right direction. We have our new food service director, Rob. He seems wonderful, very diligent, very on top of things, so I'm very pleased with him. Today I did download the contract through Whitsons into the drive. I don't know to, to it going in today if anyone had a chance to look at it, but I wanted you to see it. That is Desi's template, um, for the non, for their simple contract for the drive. If we go with them in the future, then it'll be a different contract. Those are my, does anyone have any questions on those two before I move forward?
I have some questions. Are, are, like, I know in the presentation they mentioned they like hoped to know if, like, if they liked it or whatnot. Is there like an active, um, seeking the kids' opinions on the, you know? Because I know like the protein pack, the elementary school, my daughter said she was starting afterwards. So I didn't know if there was like a little feedback box that they could write their feedback or?
Well, I, 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 um, all three admins, or I had every lunch and we were actively, like, sitting down with students. So what do you think? What do you think of this? Are, do you feel, oh, do, you know, so it gets, um, not anything formal, um, but it's been informal data gathering as we move out. You know, do you feel like there's larger portions? And that's where, you know, it, the feedback has been, that, you know, the portion size is better, um. You know, so it's been, it's, it's been a wonderful opportunity to talk with you.
Yeah. Jessica, that's a good point because I actually also heard those power packs. But again, at the end of the day, the kids are choosing their lunch, like, I would be hungry after and they're little.
Sounded a little fatigued and my daughter is like.
It's like one cheese stick, a probably a serving of fruit, a serving of fruit oil, which isn't a lot. And then it's like probably a couple scoops of yogurt in the power pack, but they're.
And then the lunch, well, that's a lunch.
That's what you can, that, that's one of the, I think the elementary schools, I don't know if they have that at Tohoto too.
No.
Yeah, so it's, I can see because Maggie's fifth grade, right? That's hard because I, I think I would develop a kindergarten or a first grader, probably one developed a narrator. So it's just.
So I was just curious if there's like a, a feedback process for my kids.
John, do you guys get any feedback from the kids at the elementary level?
Yeah, kids are thrilled. You know, they're, we're not seeing the same change at the elementary level that they saw here in Tohoto, except for the, the power packs, which have been super popular. There's, we, there's probably twenty percent of kids are ordering that. But I have not heard the item number five.
No, okay, I don't. Both, yeah, both kids came off saying that the first day.
Yeah, yeah, I was surprised because, you know, I kind of had the same reaction. But I know that they have, you know, very specific requirements about what they're supposed to provide in the portions.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, and portioned and so many carbs and.
That is, that, that's a true point, yeah.
Although it was interesting, one of the menu, it looked like, like a carb card, protein, protein for different lunches inside. It would be interesting what the formula was because I know it is very formulated.
Power pack is two carbs and two proteins, but they're, the carb, one carb is fruit.
I think it was like mac and cheese and french fries or something like that.
Yeah.
And then the next day it was like two proteins.
The other thing, so still getting their feedback a little bit. You know, there's still a lot to order, I don't know if it's gonna be what you're doing.
Maybe they'll, they'll make some a little more yogurt or a little more food and.
I know they plan to do more à la carte items in the elementary schools, but they're slowly working their way out to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's coming.
I've only heard a lot of things about food myself from kids at school and they like, but I, yeah, so people are saying, yes, they like the food. Yeah, whether it's a different brand or I don't know, but.
Yep.
Regarding the contract, I don't know if this is you or if this is maybe Norma Paul or Carol question. Can we please get an electronic signature program? Because when, I noticed the contract, it's a scan of a document, so it's not searchable. It's tough to read because it's small and dust on the glass and makes it blurry. Can we get an electronic sign?
They have, they have, yeah. They have obviously signed, but this one didn't come through with.
Or can't you add any document to the document, to add electronic signatures to it? Because then we can search it, it can be searched on the drive.
Okay, I can, I can search, absolutely, yeah.
And then what's the other document in there about this Desi?
I know, so that's a corrective action plan that we received from Desi. So, that is saying that enforcing that we procure a contract for fiscal year twenty five and that we have to use their template. So, the way this all went down was within a very short period, a very short timeframe. So in reality, you should go out for bid, you should get your bids in, and then you, the contract that you should use is a contract from Desi. A different contract than, from Desi than what this is. The, there's, there's a standard one and that's what they want us to use. So the corrective action plan is saying, if you continue on this path for fiscal year twenty five, you are to use that contract, not this contract.
And why was that contract used?
Because it was an emergency procurement. Because of the timeframe.
So that's the correct emergency contract?
Yes, it's the one they allowed us to use because we didn't have time to use the contract that they didn't allow us to use.
That all came in on time and everything?
Sorry?
That all came in on time and Desi wasn't on board with that before our last meeting?
Yes.
I heard there's a conflict in timing.
Yeah, it was tight. So I got a verbal approval, when was I missing last meeting?
Well, twelve.
So I think I got verbal approval, uh, the day before, right around there on the eleventh. And then I got an approval through email shortly after that. Um, so yeah, it's officially approved through Desi.
So Desi wouldn't have sent it to mail, they'd have to give you the verbal?
No, they said, I think they sent it the day after.
I noticed in here it mentions a threshold of a hundred thousand that we can't use. It says something, I'm trying not to be a side news here, I'll clear it down. It says it exceeds the threshold of a hundred thousand. What's that hundred thousand refer?
Can you tell me what page you're on?
Yeah, it's on the first, the second paragraph of that form, the corrective action plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there we go, it says, it says.
That, that's just the procurement guidelines. It's saying that we have a one hundred thousand if we go out to bid for a whole year. So there's different, just procurement guidelines when you go out to bid. And we definitely come in over a hundred thousand for fiscal year twenty five.
It says the SFA, which I assume is us.
The SFA is us, yeah.
Use the small procurement method, which involves retaining quotes from three vendors.
That's what we did right now. So that's the process we did right now.
Selecting responsible, responsible vendor with the lowest price. Due to the anticipated value for the contract exceeding a hundred thousand. But I even thought that the contract with Whitsons was only for a thirty thousand dollar payment.
The contract for Whitsons.
Their fee is, I think, twelve thousand for one service and eighteen hundred.
Eighteen, that's right, those are right, that's just the fee, the total.
The question is just based on the fee or?
You got the fee and then you got the food.
The women, the, the foods on the contract.
They, they are ordering the food.
So we pay Whitsons.
Right.
For the food. So they can mark it up.
Right.
All right.
We don't know if they're paying for the food, we're just, they're just saying this is what we're.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how I, that's how I understood it at least.
On the contract, there's three options. One was the, the guaranteed break even that we went with.
Yes.
There's one that's also guaranteed surplus, what's that?
Can we receive the surplus?
Why don't we go for that? Because that sounds like guaranteed profit.
Because we're not, we aren't in position to receive a surplus, we're in a position to break even. They want, they will go on for a surplus.
So we might try for that next time?
We could, absolutely.
Seems like that.
I think they just had to get help, eat what and see, you know, and really look at.
So this spring, you're still considering, what are you considering for the spring after this contract? What's being considered for the food service here?
We have to go out to bid.
We have to go out to bid and we have to put an R P.
So the idea of hiring our own director of replacement length is off the table?
Not necessarily, I think we have to look at.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I think we have to look at what the bids coming out from these vendors, whether what we think about Whitsons, whether we want to stay with them. What would you do with our, making sure that we secure our staff and that that's all, you know, would be whoever we choose, would be in our staff. And we have to allow considerations of that. But we certainly, we, we could go out again to advertise for our food service director, just separate one of those contracts. We just see the cost that the two of us will cost.
This is, sorry, Carolyn.
No, that's, I just, this is going to creep up on us. Yeah. Yeah, we need to do it by the end of March.
End of March. Like at our P O.
We need to be, yeah.
We have to put our P O.
What would you, what would you advertise from the position where you go with our P O? See if you get any decent.
Yeah, if you do that.
What makes sense financially?
I think as long as you're, the goal of the food service revolving account is to break even and, or a little surplus. So you can buy additional equipment that's needed for the kitchens. With this break, I like the, with the break even. And if you're getting good quality food and the kids are liking it, I think it's a great option. I've heard.
Guaranteed profit may be that option.
Yeah, the surplus may be a great option to look at, if you said.
It's so long, so, so long when you keep current staff and all that, you know?
I think too, I was just thinking as you're asking that question, like, I would also like, if we were able to hire an individual portion, I would also, I think, seeing what we can have a possibility to have. At this point, we would have to see if that person, that individual person could create the same kind of environmental presentation, options, variety for the students. And also being mindful of the types of food that's provided to the students and quality, uh, the health, the health factor of that as this company. It's sometimes it is.
I can imagine that's a tall task to do, it's two, three months.
Yeah, it's, it's a tall, I think that's why this kind of company were attracted to us because we saw what they could do. We wanted to test it out as a possibility. It's been difficult to get a food service director, um, and somebody single-handedly who could do something like this company can do. But we also have to see if it could financially sustain. That's another piece we're working on, if we can do that. So you're right, it's, it's gotta be, it's a quick, it's gotta be good. It's gotta come up on us, we're, we have to do this with this. Yeah, but we can't, I will, I'll also look on a discount if this is a really good food service program for our students, you know, eating healthy quality food. It is one of our priorities on the revenue to making this school responsible.
Yeah, their greeting was, was impressive, yeah.
Yeah, you might get higher quality food because they're ordering it in bulk because they're preparing, getting order in some of the whole districts. So, okay. All right, any more questions about, so Nancy checked with Whitsons and the access deficiency? You gotta move into the capital plan now?
Yeah.
All right.
So we have developed a five-year capital plan. I worked with Dan and Paul in doing this. So I'm gonna go over it quickly because you have it all in front of you and hopefully everyone got a chance to read it. So I'll quickly cover the changes we have made since the last time, um, this committee has seen it. So for B M S, originally we put an additional bus, we took that bus out. The value of the bus was fifty-nine thousand four hundred. We met with our subcommittee and the subcommittee felt that it wasn't a necessary expense at this point. The students are getting to and from school within the legally allowed a time with all the additional costs we're asking for, this wasn't a priority. The walkie-talkies, we took out of the capital plan and we added them into all three general, all three schools in the general budget. This was recommended when we met with Berlin and FinCon and it was a good recommendation. So we did that. Then we removed the intercon system from B M S, um, because it broke and it needed to be fixed immediately. So we were fortunate enough that we were able to take the funds this year from the flat roof project because we have remaining funds. So we funded that from there for, it looks like it's going to commit about twenty-nine thousand and it should be completed by Friday because they're working on it right now. The last item, um, there was a line item to refinish the gym floor and we took out that out because that's an expense that's met by the recreation department. So that covers B M S. B for Boylston Elementary, we adjusted the updates to the bathrooms. Initially, the bathrooms were put in to be gutted and redone. And after further conversation with the facility director, we decided to keep the tile on the walls and the floor. We're gonna power wash them. We're gonna keep the toilets as they are in good condition. And we're recommending that the partitions and the sinks be replaced. And this amount went from one hundred and fifty-seven thousand to seventy-five thousand. We added more detail also for the playground equipment. We, I met with Cindy, the principal, and we are putting in communication board, inclusive swings, step playground activity and a sensory panel. And the cost has remained the same. There were two hot water heaters that we had in the budget and we moved upon the, um, facility director's recommendation. We moved this down to fiscal year twenty-seven because the use of life can last longer. We moved the paving of the parking lot to fiscal year twenty-six. And we removed the plumbing repairs in the bathrooms for seven thousand as this is an item that we should be able to repair in this year's budget. We added a new fence to be installed around the playground for ten thousand dollars. This will be needed if we move our preschool program to B E S. Lastly, we kind of have an open item right now. So it recently came to our attention that we do not have heat in the kitchen. And want to be clear that we have heat in the cafeteria, this is just the kitchen only. We're waiting for a quote to come into the cost of the project. Depending on the price, this might have to wait to fiscal year twenty-five. For now, we have, we have heaters in the stoves kind of keep it warm, so it's reasonably heated. That's B E S in Tohoto. We took the floor scrubber off, we had it repaired and a new long, new, new one is no longer needed. We moved the storage unit to fiscal year twenty-six. H V A C controls have been added for fifty-five thousand dollars, they're outdated and need to be replaced. And we added a line item for athletic field renovations. So the fields really need to be regraded, blue, aerated, and a sample needs to be taken so the right products are used on these fields. The cost is unknown at this time and we hope to have this updated within the next month. Those are my capital updates.
Yes.
Yes.
On the capital. Does this report relate to the three documents, the three other documents and then the five-year plans?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You're reading from your report, business office report to school.
Yes. Oh, does it relate to these? Yes, it does.
Yeah, it's reading through.
Yes, it does.
The B M S one just doesn't have timing on it, doesn't have timeline on it?
Okay, so I'll fill in the dates, see where the grays are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just get it blanked out because the one we looked at at our meeting did.
Yeah.
B E S and Tohoto do.
I wonder when I.
It's because you updated it to say five year when I remember it said three.
And it must have cut that up.
It must have cut the dates up.
Okay.
Either way, for next time.
Yeah.
There's an item in there for paving the parking lot driveway. At B M S, or reading through the list, that's gonna be on the town, so that should. That's gonna be on the town, so that should come out of there? If, assuming that the lease gets signed as it is.
We talked about that actually, Mike, we talked about that at our subcommittee meeting, where like, where is the line between what the town, what, what should be in our capital budget and what should we come back to the town?
The lease that said specifically says paving parking lot driveway.
Yeah, I mean, I would think the roof should be covered by the, the.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, um, party that owns the building, um, something as windows and walls, but.
Right, it's in there.
It's in there, yeah, so I mean, I, I would think.
Well, we didn't have all these.
Well, we don't have, yeah, I agree, I think.
I don't know if it would be something that we can still put in the capital plan, even, because they're still live, you know what I mean, if that's a way to track that.
They will put their capital plan.
They should put it on their capital plan, right, exactly, but yeah, we are gonna have, we'd, we'd have to have a way of telling them like, hey, we, this is what these buildings need, because they're, they're not gonna come in and inspect them. So yeah, it was.
No, the lease says they will.
Yeah.
It specifically has a clause that says they will come in and inspect. They do, they supposed to do inspection here, yeah.
They are?
Yeah.
Has that ever happened?
So they have, they saying that.
Alright, do we have to request it?
With the rest.
Yeah, that's, that was in the red line version, right?
These are good questions too, that we can ask Kristen, we can ask Kristen about that. And I was thinking about this is. Down the road, we once, twice as close as a pool too, particularly to something we need to have. It should be a couple of times, one of us could be.
Well, that's a question I wanna make sure we get great, because we only have a couple of months left.
Right, and one that we have to pay for the town, like this was your responsibility capital plan, this is our responsibility capital plan. So that would be a question that you, should clarify.
Was the B E S behind this school paved area mentioned at all?
That's still, I think they moved it, so both run in the map.
Just run in the background.
The whole part we got, Dan, right?
Yeah.
The B E S.
Instead of doing this, what's the E M, what's the whole thing?
Right.
Adding additional.
I think it's.
Yeah, right.
I think the B E S. Did you hear, so they said instead of doing one part of it, they wanna do the whole thing and adding additional spaces at B E S. But they're not gonna be able to do that next fiscal year, I think it's in twenty, twenty, oh my god, I just lost it. That's in fiscal twenty-seven or fiscal twenty-six?
Six. Twenty-six.
So that would not be, that's your. Yeah, paving. Yeah, repave parking lot, and that's fiscal twenty-six.
Are there still holes out there?
There are, so Carolyn and I, we talked about it at our, um, and Nancy and Julie, we kinda started talking about B E S and the facility and sure tomorrow is gonna be a telltale sign of that roof leaks again, I mean, it wasn't repaired, right?
Yeah.
So, see.
Two inches of rain.
Supposed to get two inches of rain tonight, seems like every time that happens, but I think Carolyn and I decide, decided we were gonna kinda have, uh, start having a conversation, because we, we wanna form a committee where the town of Boylston has a say and decides, or not decides, maybe starts talking about, do we need a new building, or are we just going to invest in this building?
Well, this being a B E S, you also have a fence in it, ten grand.
Yeah, that's a preschool that's moved there, I don't know.
When will that, when will we know that?
Um, the report will be available, um, March of this, of this school year, with some recommendations, that's what we are in terms of the preschool program evaluation. Um, and then it needs to be, of course, looked at, discussed, decisions need to be made, but we'll have some recommendations around that in March.
Well, so that, we talked about that too at our meeting, at our subcommittee meeting. The playground that's gonna get fenced in is the kindergarten playground. The big playground at B E S is too big for preschool kids. I don't know if you're, you know about that playground, I know Cindy's not here.
No.
You know what I'm saying, John, they're certain playgrounds.
Yeah.
That playground specifically, children, you have to be like, you, they don't allow kindergarten kids to go on, it's dangerous for young children, so.
My question is, it's ten thousand dollars that could be spent on a lot of different things. We won't know if we're gonna have a preschool until after we're voting on the budget. So.
Yeah, I don't know, moved it to Cindy for that question, yeah, I, I wish she was here, so that's a question we can ask Cindy, I don't know why she uh, want, she just wanted that as a.
I know she's. Yeah.
Ten thousand dollars can get a lot of, uh, original programs at B E S that currently have.
Is it currently open?
No, no.
Well, no, the playground's fence, I mean, you know, there's big fences back cut.
No, that was sectioned.
What?
It was sectioned with the sandbox is.
That's where, that's kindergarten playground, so that's where they wanna put the fence?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
This is probably required.
I know, measured.
It's required for preschool, if they're preschool for kindergarten, they don't, I mean, it's.
That's a question, if there's not gonna be a preschool there.
I agree, if there's not gonna be a preschool there, I do not think they need a fence back there.
No, they won't pull one into the preschool.
Oh, we gotta.
We're not gonna hope there's gonna be preschool those this year, to this point.
I know, Katie. Isn't that part of the gym, is that part of the five year?
That's for next year.
So it hasn't been for fiscal.
In five, so.
That's what Cindy asked, we probably should move it to fiscal twenty-six there, because we don't, even if we're not gonna know about the preschool.
Even if we know, we'll know about the preschool to a point, how, after we wrote on these things. And then it's going to be. Oh, just with the year. At least two moves.
So it's preschools.
Yeah.
If fence is a hot topic, the body isn't these down, so.
Fence, what, they are though.
Not that point, like it was.
I was, I mean, that's a small area, it's a little, yeah, that's a little, when you were talking about that big playground, I'm like.
Alright, alright, that, that was my question, it, it needed to be there, though.
Do you want me to move it to twenty-six?
We don't.
Um, I would wait till we talk to Cindy.
Okay.
But I agree with that, I know we brought that up, and I was like, no playground or fence again, we don't need to fence that big playground in. But yeah, I guess, if it's that little one, the kindergarten one, then sure, it's like right next to the building, it's probably a good idea to fence that little structure. For the preschool, but we don't need that until we're done with it, as long as Cindy's okay with it.
And just to mention, just to the points Mike was making before, if you just look at pages three, four, and five, just to you'll see those kinds of things about the five thousand dollars, hoping what coverage is responsible.
For the, let's hope if it's over five thousand, yes.
So you'll, we're speaking about.
That's how it's classified.
But I'd be curious to know about creating that capital plan, or if we have to notify them certain thirty times.
Yeah, the process, so there'll be reports that keep alive on.
Yeah, having leases is gonna be a game changer, who said it will be a, a legal document, saying who you guys are responsible for this?
And I know that people in the voice is also interested in whether we create a, um, because she very much wants to have at least this will button up things that were in the reach of agreement, cutting off the work and figure out, so I think this will be really defining responsibilities for everybody.
Alright, does anyone have any other questions on the capital plan? Alright, so the last thing, I mean, it's, you're talking about, oh no, wait, you have two more things.
Yeah, one more, like, one more, one more thing, my budget, like quarterly budget for.
Yeah, sorry, and that includes the transfers that we've been voting on.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So district-wide, our spending aligns as to where it should be as of December two thousand twenty-three. Each school has some line items that need in budget transfers for yearly adjustments. I, train, I, this committee's used to seeing the transfers at the end of the fiscal year. I would like to do it on a quarterly basis. I decided to do this for two reasons, one's for transparency, because I think it's important. You guys are responsible for the budget and you should see what's happening. The one thing that I want you to know, though, this is always the one that has the most, because these are planned trans, these are planned transfers when I create the budget. Sometimes I make placeholders, with that, when I'm expecting to do these transfers after the budget's approved. So that's what a lot of these are. They have no impact to the total budget. They total a zero, you take them all, you got your ins and you have your outs, and at the end of the day, there's zero. No revenues coming from any other sources, it's, it's just a wash. Uh, but it's something that the committee has to approve. But overall, we're in a really good position. One of the things you'll also find in the packet is I included a new circuit breaker forecast. And I did this because we're having, um, we've had some movement with our out-of-district tuitions. As you know, I can't get into detail due to confidentiality, but due to this movement, um, the expenses slightly changed. So right now, we're forecasting to have approximately three hundred and forty-five thousand remaining in circuit breaker at the end of this year. So that, that's my update, and then the rest of this is all my transfers. Instead of reading all of them, and then hopefully you all had time to review them, I think I'll open it up to any questions that you have.
Nancy, are you referring to that report or to the spreadsheet?
Both. So. Well, what spreadsheet are you talking about?
Uh, you've got, uh, where is it, the, the file column, vote on year D budget transfers. It breaks it up, district-wide, B M S.
Yes, so I'm referring to that, and it has the column with the budget transfers.
So.
But then I, I, on my memo, I more specifically went into the transfers for explanations.
That's what my question is.
Sure.
I can follow this up, and I'm in a company.
Okay. It's, it's.
I can, on your, on your, on your spreadsheet.
Yeah.
I understand how it fits.
Yeah.
Okay. But these numbers don't match to what's on your memo.
So I, what I did is I took anything that was five thousand dollars and over, so the small ones aren't included.
Where?
So if you added them all up, they do, and I, I guess I could, could, maybe I shouldn't.
Because in your memo, for example.
Yeah.
All the decreases should equal all the increases, right?
For B M, for B M S on your spreadsheet that you vote, you have two hundred and eight thousand moving across various buckets. Two oh eight, five twenty-five, is that correct?
Out of district, yes.
Right, and that's coming from there and then being spread across various amounts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
But then on your memo, you, you're detailing what's increasing and decreasing. You've got almost three hundred thousand decreasing, two hundred and seventy-six thousand increasing, I know you're saying it's only a little over five thousand, but that's a twenty-four thousand dollar difference. So I was just having a, I was having such a hard time following along with the numbers. I can't vote on this without knowing that it ties up.
I'm, I guess I need to find a better way to present this to you. So normally, I could just give you the line items.
I mean, that was my, my other question was, when it comes to budgets, numbers, and us to review things, can we get actual spreadsheets and share the buckets?
Like, I, right here, I have every G L with every budget transfer.
Yeah.
All I did is I took these and I tried to summarize them for you.
No, I get it.
And I get why it's confusing, very, like, I, I, I understand that, maybe it would be better for you to receive this, where you could just see everything that, that happens.
It would be.
Right.
But even still, on the, the, the document you want us to vote on.
Yes.
For B M S.
So if you look at B M S, you look at the out-of-district tuitions, this is showing you that two hundred and eight thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars was transferred out, right? We started with six hundred and twenty-four thousand, we went to four hundred and fifteen thousand. On my memo, I have two hundred thousand dollars going now. The eight thousand.
You have two hundred and twenty-four thousand.
No, that was.
Yeah, your memo says two hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Oh, two hundred and twenty-four thousand was taken out. But see, what happens is then, that money went in somewhere else at another point in time.
Yeah, but I, I get that, but it just doesn't match.
Because I didn't include all the small ones, there was so many small ones. I, I kinda kept listing it, I think.
But you're saying in one document, two hundred and twenty-four thousand is coming out of district, out of district tuition, and the second document that you want us to vote on, you're saying two hundred and eight thousand is coming out.
I was just asked to summarize it, so that's what I did, if you wanted the detail, we could do it at the next meeting, and I could give you the, this right here that.
But summarize, I mean, I mean, summarize and more detail, I mean, two twenty-four and two oh eight don't match. See what I mean?
Yeah, it's because I did the, but I didn't go under five thousand dollars, they're all like, one hundred and five thousand dollars.
Can I ask something?
No, that doesn't make sense.
So are you, what you list, I think part of this, part of the reason why this is, you're listing transfers between accounts on this memo.
Mm-hmm.
So your buckets on this memo are, are smaller, you're listing like when you move things out of different accounts, but it might not necessarily mean you moved them out of that bucket on the so you might.
Regardless, your out-of-district tuition.
So let me, let me try this, but. I took two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars out of one out-of-district line item.
Right.
And then I added fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars to another line item, which comes to your two oh eight, five twenty-five.
That's what I was gonna say, so you're, the out-of-district tuition is the, if you have stuff, might be moving within the same bucket.
Exactly.
I can't describe it off, but I can visualize it, because.
That's why, that's why.
A spreadsheet would be, I agree with my, looking at an asterisk.
I can't vote on.
I, I've never done this in our FinCon meeting, Carol asked me to summarize it, so I summarized it.
We talked about summarizing it, that was on us.
Yeah, but summarizing, you still need to.
This is, this is what you should have.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And I, I'll.
But we don't have it.
Like, we'll give it to you for the next meeting.
Oh, yeah. But summarizing, I mean, you, you still have to tie it up to summarize. It says, right, at Berlin Elementary, two twenty-four was taken out from out-of-district line item. It doesn't say two hundred and twenty-four was taken out, plus a bunch of stuff, one hundred and five thousand, but I'm talking about. But then on the document you gotta vote on. It says.
So I do have, like, if you go down below, increased out-of-district private schools for sixteen thousand.
Where is this?
So go down, one, two, three, four, five, six lines down.
On your memo or on?
On my memo.
Okay. Six lines, one, two, three, four, five, sixteen thousand?
Yeah, so increased, so if you take the two twenty-four, if you do, if you do that out, you'll get the two oh eight, five twenty-five, it's just very confusing.
Agreed.
I was like, this is really hard.
They do match, I see why you're confused, I don't know how they've been presented to you in the past. I think we're just all learning how to make it so you understand it better. I'm fine giving, if you want the spreadsheet, then I'm, I'm fine doing that. Whatever you find easiest is worse for me, but it, it does tie up, like, do you see how that ties up? I, I, that's why I was trying.
Why, so I guess that brings up what's the difference between out-of-district private schools and out-of-district tuition?
So you got a private school and you have a collaborative, one of those line items was a collaborative, one of those line items was a private school.
So why are they netted together, they should be separate line items? Why are they netted together if they should be separate line items?
They are separate line items.
But you just said they netted the two oh eight.
Well, they're separate accounts that fall under.
They're both under the same G L, but the same G L, one G L's collaborative, but one G L is private.
That's different G Ls.
They all go under the same, on the end of your report. It's a very complicated process.
Alright, so for B M S, for example, your decreases and increases from your sheet, again, go from three hundred thousand to two hundred and seventy-six thousand to two oh eight thousand. I, I added them all up, I think that's what it was.
And I, what do you want me?
In your memo, if you go through each sentence, decreases and increases. Your decreases are two hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred. Your increases are two hundred and seventy-six thousand. So that's the difference in twenty-three thousand six hundred.
Which is your small items.
Okay. But we don't have that, and then I see the only thing decreasing on the transfers that we're supposed to be voting for is two hundred and eight thousand.
I'm not following it now, I'm gonna go with the B E S.
B M S.
Uh, we're, I'm sorry, I thought we moved on to B M S.
B M S, yes.
So say that again, you, you're losing me.
In your memo, if you go sentence by sentence, adding up all the decreases, it's a decrease of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand. All your increases add up to two hundred and seventy-six thousand. You're saying the difference is the small item, okay. On the document you are asking us to vote on, the only decrease there is two hundred and eight thousand.
Because it's a net increase.
The net, the net is two oh eight, but the net here is not two oh eight.
Instead, we could, we wouldn't be here all night, but like, it's just very complicated, I think I'm better off waiting to the next one and giving you the spreadsheet to look at, the budget transfers.
Okay, so.
Alright, so if you guys want, get a spreadsheet.
a spreadsheet to review it. Alright, Jess, do you have anything to say? I'm not trying to single you out, I'm just asking if I feel like you wanna be sure.
Not my nerves, not my things.
Alright, Lisa, what about, any thoughts? Alright, so you wanna wait until the next meeting and you wanna review the spreadsheet?
Yeah, I'd just send that out.
Alright. Alright, so we'll do that. We'll wait. Is that gonna screw up anything, not me?
No.
Okay.
It's fine.
Alright. Okay. Alright, is there anything else for Nancy before we move on to subcommittee updates? Okay, Jess, would you like to take it away, Student Success in Technology Subcommittee? And then just jump right into our superintendent eval, as Laura. Thank you, Jess.
So you heard the majority of what we did for the Student Success in Technology meeting through our presentation, Lisa and I for the conference. But the future items that we want to talk about is, sorry. General, these are the items. Is that we want to review the handbooks. Um, not necessarily changing content, but just cleaning things up, making it more aesthetically pleasing, confirming through Janelle and the other admins that, you know, the legal, the policies that legally we need to include are in there. So that's just a future end item. Also, I know the new website was meant to be coming out in January. So just making sure that it highlights like the blue ribbon achievements. Also, go back, Brittany during one of our meetings, who said she could take a chunk of the three-year plan, district improvement plan here from the meeting of the member two, that you guys have done to, to make people understand more kind of the vision of the district. And then also was the, um, the microphone, the sound quality too.
That's awesome. So, um, I, if everyone's okay with that, I'd like to designate the Student Success in Technology Subcommittee to take on those handbooks if you guys are good with that. I think that's a great project for you guys and I really appreciate you tackling that. And I think that it's a great way to get it streamlined so that next year it should be a much easier process for updating. You can work with Carol and the principals on that. Thank you. Um, and then Jess, like I said, I, I wanna reiterate again, I am so grateful for the town of Berlin to donate or allow us to use their, but that's awesome. Cause I know that's a, um, an issue we have this with audio. So I'll make sure I reply and say thank you to Brittany, but that is greatly appreciated. So thanks. And we'll figure out next time if we have to vote on that or if we can, I think it's a loan, so I don't, it says in the emails, a loan. Yeah, so I think, I don't think we have to vote on that, so I'll reply, but I can double check with him and make sure. Alright, thank you. Uh, was there anything else for that Subcommittee? Alright, did you wanna speak?
No idea, but it is.
Well, I wanna say something about that. We have one update from Paul on the, uh, Carol and I talked, we're gonna have, um, Janelle, Paul, Sally, Eric updates and the principals at our February meeting with the budget update.
So if it's coming out January, will the new website be wanting people to call updates?
I, I don't know when the website is coming out. I know that it's submitted.
He's made, he's made it with us tomorrow to start to get us to, to train how they have, and he's up to the other sides and that's it. So we should be up by the end of May, so we can.
That's good. So then I'll be able to give us like a lot of updates.
Yeah. I'm glad they're coming back to everybody's doing their reports again. We'll, we'll, we haven't heard about what's going on.
A non-monthly basis?
But like five minutes each.
We'll try to keep it quick, yeah. It's tough to keep the time a lot. Alright, so that's good. Does anyone have questions for Jess on the student success? So Jess, uh, are you comfortable with giving Laura's these, thank you?
Yep, so, um, Laura and I met December first. Um, and we reviewed the superintendent evaluation. And Lori is going to be color coding it, so for her goals versus where the rubric that we're doing, it should be easy to go through. And instead of having the January twenty-fourth meeting from NASC, there is a pre-recorded webinar that Lori put in, it's a trivial document within the drives to watch, just so you're familiar with the process. Lori also put it in the drives to, to click through it, just so you kind of know what's coming at you. This is true also for the self-evaluation. We went through that as well in that meeting. That's a school committee self-evaluation. And there were some areas that we found that perhaps we should alert, you know, to work on in the coming months. Items within that self-evaluation that we didn't feel we were addressing. So I encourage you to go over the minutes of that, which is another meeting that was pretty detailed. And there was a question of perhaps a parent certainly, it's apparent a feedback was also in there that we, you know, didn't have, step one, the superintendent advisory committee that put out one at one point. And so there was just throwing that out. Also, when you do, Carol, your new goals for next year, if you could color code them. Just as a future
Future goal.
In the same color coding that we use for the, um, rubric of The rubric, so we can show you, or Laura can show you. Yeah, they, they, I think it's easy. She, they made some color coding things in the last meeting.
There, yeah, they will
For the sort of
Yeah. Just like when you're, so, cause you were looking at, I think, at the rubric, you're developing your goals, so they align a bit more. When you're creating it, it'll be easier to
So Jess, where is that, um, presentation? And maybe we, I, I'll email it out, I'll ask Laura.
Um, I'll have to put it in. Let me see, it might be under the, the Subcommittee Report.
Oh, for this meeting?
For this meeting, yeah.
Okay. The other one, workshop superintendent, alright, so it's in the, for anyone that's interested in, in there's a link in a PDF, it's called Superintendent Eval Workshop. S U P T E V A L Workshop. For anyone, and then you click into it, it's PDF and there's a link there. Alright, great. Anything else?
Just add some, look at the minutes, just a couple of different points that, you know, since we're gonna evaluate ourselves coming down the line, it'd be nice to know what we're evaluating ourselves and maybe the areas that we wanna improve before that.
I just have a question for you. So what we left the last meeting, Lori had just said to present, ten more, just my evidence. Is there a certain way the school committee would like that presented, right? They've been uploading everything in the drive under the superintendent's goals in my different sessions, but I didn't know if there's a, if it's informal discussion or a specific way we're supposed to do it.
Yeah, I think informal, so just like, so we can see that some of those boxes we can check. I know you were putting evidence in and I think it's beautiful, it's in one place, so when we're doing the evaluation, it will all be there. I, I, I know I had found it in one, but I think you were putting it under each goal already. You're ordering evidence under each
Each goal, yeah.
It's beautiful, so.
And then just, we just talked, talked to it, to it.
You don't like it?
Oh, wait, don't. I think so, okay. No, I feel like time is best spent, uh, if you put the report in the drive, time's best spent here where a lot of people ask questions.
Yeah.
And we don't want, obviously, no one's gonna blindside you, so if we have any major questions that you, you know, she needs to look into, like, oh, what are you gonna do for this project in March? And she just says project in March, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna blindside you, but um, I think the time's best spent answering questions and discussion, right? Alright.
Maybe, I mean, maybe I have just a suggestion that that would be helpful. If you have a chance before the next meeting to look at what I put in as everyone's already and maybe go, but maybe
Can you, can you send us the location and, like, how, I'm trying to get it.
Nicole put it under the F one twenty-three. It's the superintendent's goal, you know.
Oh, yeah, it's under, yes, I noticed that. It's in twenty twenty-three. So we could have her Yeah, 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 yeah.
It appears like they're not, not school years, it was like twenty-three.
Yeah, we talked about that. Actually, Nancy made that point before. She was like, why don't we do this this school year? I was like, I don't know, I've probably done it this way. Or fiscal years or whatever, yeah, cause the fiscal year is like June thirtieth, which is when we kind of end our school committee year. So something to talk about, arranging the drive. Uh, for now, we've always done it this way, so like, if you need to find a meeting, you don't have to click, like, if we were still, like, this fiscal year is twenty twenty-four. But like in July, it'll be fiscal year twenty twenty-five, so if to find the July meeting, you'd have to click the twenty twenty-five folder, so that's, we talked about that, it'd get confusing, so I don't know. I don't know if anyone has strong feelings about that, but the drive is difficult these. Yeah, I mean, you already have it divided by each role, so that's beautiful, so. Alright, my computer dies when I use this. So, um, it's fine. Alright, so was there anything else for Jess? Alright, Mike, do you wanna, um, do the policy?
Yeah, uh, we, we haven't had a meeting since our last school committee meeting. We are scheduled for twenty minutes, but there were several policies that were, first reads last time, then our votes, if there is any questions, we'll get to those.
Quite great. Uh, so for the budget Subcommittee, uh, we did meet and we literally reviewed everything that Nancy just went over. We did not have that memo. That was actually what we, we had the meeting on Friday and Julie and I had to ask her for the memo, so I do appreciate the hard work on the memo because she did work. Hopefully we can take the memo down. I, when I saw it this morning, I said, this is confusing, or Monday morning, I think, whatever day it was. It is confusing, so I think once we find our groove, that'll be good. But yeah, I think the big thing that came out of that budget Subcommittee meeting was what are we gonna do with PBS? You know, anxious to see what happens tomorrow. I think if the roof leaks again, we need to have a serious discussion about putting the roof on this year. And Carol and I, what, what came out of that meeting is I think we decided we were gonna try to, I know Mike, you love this, have another Subcommittee to have a meeting about meetings, about meetings.
About meetings.
I know. No, but the, the, the thing is, I think we need to make a decision collectively as a group. Everyone in this room, are we gonna move forward and start planning to put up a new elementary school, regional elementary school, are we gonna put a new building in? Or are we going to invest in our current buildings? What's the space situation in Berlin? What's, you know, what, what down the road, Nancy has this five-year capital plan. What are we gonna do? And what else do we need to do if we wanna keep PBS for another twenty years, if that's what we decide to do? But I, I think that those are kind of questions looming and that was kind of what we talked about at our Subcommittee meeting. Nobody knows the answer. I don't think anyone wants to say, just make a decision on it on their own.
Do you have any farthest with the town on, setting up that?
We haven't heard.
No. So I think Carol and I are gonna try to spearhead that. We had talked about that and then we got super busy this month, but I think, you know.
That's your answer.
That's exactly what we need to do, Mike. And we said we want, you know, someone from the select board, someone from the planning board, April needs to be involved.
Matt's key to do.
Matt, absolutely. He's actually, he's been really helpful with a lot of things, so, um, you know, talk, Carol's gonna talk about the SRO forum coming up. We've been working on that, so I think maybe once that's behind us, then we can start focusing on this. So yeah, that's where we, we're at and Carol and I talked about, yeah, we, we want, somebody needs to put that together, so no, we had not heard from the town and, and maybe the, either the budget facilities, that Subcommittee can be part of that and we gotta figure it out. Just another thing on the list to do, right?
Mm-hmm.
Just another thing. Yeah, so obviously we'll be monitoring the roof of PBS tomorrow too. That's another Alright, so that was it for budget. We're all set with policy. Any questions thus far? Cause then we're gonna roll into Carol and then the votes. Alright, so one other thing, Carol had left a document in the drive that was marked confidential. It's about the security plan, just so everyone knows. We're only supposed to be discussing the school's security plan in executive session. She wanted to give you guys an update on what's going on. Are they able to ask questions on that?
They probably won't be doing that in executive session.
Okay, alright, so that was just like a fore-read, just an FYI. So if anyone has questions on that, you can email me and we can get, okay? So we're not, you're not gonna discuss that at all. Okay, I just wanted to double check. Thank you. Alright, go ahead, Carol, I'm sorry.
So I wanted to go over a couple of, um, pieces with all of you, leave a feedback on them. In my report, the draft letter to Berlin Finance Committee, this was a request from the town of Berlin to respond to the, to the level service budget without the above-level service. Why would they not, they wanted us to give that to them. They've been asking about that. I received the emails from Kristen Rubin, the town administrator, about that. She and I spoke on the phone and she said, what I explained to her, she said, I would just agree, you could just throw a letter to us to let us understand. Um, and that's what I tried to do, explaining to them that it's not that we're not, we're just trying to hold back on that for, just to hold back on it, that we have a strategic way of doing the budget processes here based on our work with Mars, I explain that, and that's Association of Regional Schools. And rather than give them something, maybe it's changing, maybe we keep moving, we'll go around the final budget, that we wanted to wait and hold up on that until we had better, more, better information. So I drafted this letter, I shared it with Megan, um, obviously she put it in the drive. And I told her, uh, Kristen, that if you were comfortable with it, maybe that she could, I would send whatever back to them tomorrow for one of their meetings. I also do want to mention in that, I know that Guto is here from Mars, we're working on that report about the towns for us. We are normalizing that, it should be sent to us within the next week or so. I haven't talked to the, about that yesterday, but I also talked to Shiloh, who arrived on last week. So they're giving a final, which is a little interesting for us to look at against the number of, for our budget. So I think we're just doing it initially to each other, and I wanted them to know that it wasn't ill-intentional. It was strategic and smart, which we do know, so. But in all, I have a letter here, did you have any, anything you wanted to change? And did you feel comfortable having it sent? I think that's a first question.
Lisa, did you want to say something?
Yeah, my, this is just something like, it's really picky, but when I was reading it, I was just confused when it said hold of our preliminary level service budget for distribution. And would it be better to just say delay or halt that or something like that? Cause I was like, hold, you know, I, I wasn't sure what that meant exactly.
Which, can you tell me which paragraph? I just wanna change it.
Yeah, one, two, three, third paragraph down. Third line.
I can say, I can put it to vote.
Like, if you just said hold that.
That's why we don't
Anyone else? Thank you for doing that, Carol.
Okay, so I'll send that out. Oh, yeah, Aspen Valley Collaborative, every year they send us a copy of their audit report, because one, uh, four reports they send us during the year, the table we had. I think the most important thing, so every, all, there were no findings in the report, and this what struck me in my first year with Aspen Valley Collaborative and the board that sits there is how this was presented about the collaborative. This just shows from the auditors that everything has been monitored fiscally for the collaborative, that all the books show, you know, transparency on what's being presented. But what I was most impressed with was, was the fact that we had the auditors come and present to the board, the board of superintendents in the area. So we have just gotten, um, I've just signed off on them, our auditors finishing up their reports, they're sending us shortly the final audit. And I reached out to our auditors and invited them to come to our February meeting, the new auditor, to go over what the audit means. I don't think we've ever had that before, explain what the audit is about, the key points of it, and also any kind of, we didn't have any findings in the audit. There were some, there were some recommendations. There was one in particular that I thought would be important for us to look at, was the school committee and school department. So they said that they would come and go over that with us, and I think we could have I think we could give a less conversation with them and ask questions, so. And I think if the report you remove early on, so we can review it and just see if there, if you want us to learn more about. So that's, that's, that's a missed report from the collaborative that spearheaded that conversation before us. The next thing was. So also, you see the community dates set by superintendent. Um, if you could put those in your calendar, I'd love to have you join me, whether you're commenting or not. I'm happy to see they are. There's already a link to Carter, um, this past week, and that's the delightful, and I'm looking forward to use others as well.
So I'm gonna try to be at all of the morning ones. The afternoon ones are hard. I might try to stop it. I'm gonna try to get to as many as I can. The Berlin library. I can probably go and, you know, write it too, and same thing with Boyle's and library. So if anyone else is around and wants to come, that would be great. Maybe if you just come for like 30 minutes and just to show face and meet people. Yeah, we did a lot last year. We, actually, we all did a lot last year. Um, you know, all the, nineteen Carter and so.
The other, the other thing I was gonna mention with that is I think my super chief and Nicole had compiled all the dates of all the town meetings as well. The finance committees, select board, and then there's a tab there of mine. So you can, you can use that to, to, because we don't have to have all the town meetings. At least you know where they are. On our next one, go on the spreadsheet, it gets set up, something like that. Don't forget to know what the things are showing, if you can keep track of those.
Thank you for mentioning that, Adam, because I was.
Yeah, yeah, it takes me a while with those, too, of those spreadsheets. But I just, I did want to make sure that you have a chance to look at those. And do you want to mention the, this police officer forum that is January 22nd, that's Monday. Chief John Ananziata and Natalie were presenting that in the Toronto auditorium, who applied to seven p.m. We have invited the Berlin Police Department and all of the town, um, the finance community, the select board from both towns. Because Berlin does have a stake in hiring about police officer. And we've, we're encouraging, we have Nicole put it on the town websites. She'd also have the advantage of the item we mentioned about last week. They're gonna be adding that again. And we're also looking for a way, in addition to having, the last week I'll have in my newsletters, and all the principals put it in there, if there are any questions, I'll get public. Um, that they can, you know, Nicole, at any time, so that we have questions from, from the, maybe as well. We're still trying to figure out the way that folks can email or ask a question if they're live streaming the event, but we're, that's kind of what we're working on and see if we can do that. We'll have that definitely. Um, and also, this note, Dave, we did talk about that the last meeting. If it doesn't work between the second and first number, we'll put it to the twenty-four. So we're looking at going forward in our, in our newsletter. And I'll, I'll just give that and finish.
So that's gonna be a posted meeting, uh, just in case we have a forum. It would be great if everyone on the school committee could come. I know it's not a scheduled meeting, but we don't anticipate that we would vote, but there might be questions. We're thinking the school committee will sit in front of, and Carol and John will be on the stage. It's not like we'll be on stage, but it'll be good if everyone's present. And like I said, we are gonna, I believe the select boards are both, I know Boyle's did select boards planning on coming, and they were saying they were gonna post the meeting as well. So it will be a posted meeting. In the event there was deliberation or whatever, but I, I don't anticipate us taking the vote at the time or about that.
So three, so.
Well, I, we're definitely, I'm definitely hosting you guys a meeting. The agenda will go out, so I'm hoping everyone will come. I acknowledge that it's not a date. We're all busy. So if it poses an issue for anybody, obviously, don't worry about it. But it would be great to have everyone there. I heard from Boyle's and Sincom have all plans to attend. I know the Boyle's and select board is gonna be there. April's gonna be there. Kristin got back to me today. The Berlin folks are planning to come as well, so.
To the star?
Oh, yeah.
Is there a stuff for me?
Oh, I don't know about the, I don't know about the, um, select board. I got back from Kristin and.
Oh, she went to you.
Yeah, but also, you're meeting usually run later, like they start at seven. This is five to seven, so it'll be a prime.
I don't know. Do you know how long it is to stay in the meeting to run three?
I would say that would be, I would say.
Well, sure, presentation. I think her and John are only presenting for what, like 30, 40 minutes tops? So we're hoping to answer questions. So if, uh, if we don't have any more questions, then we will end. But it's gonna end at seven.
We put together a very brief PowerPoint that Megan had a chance to review what my lead them and, um, tables who, um, just passed the money.
Yes, like six or seven slides. So it's perfect.
Pretty sensitive. They gave us some more to add, some to take out. And so, um, it's, it's brief. I think that John, we're talking about the position itself, um, and the cost and so on. And I'll speak to it from why we feel that it's important on the school, school district.
Is the job description like state job description, including?
Yes, and we're making forty hard copies of those things on that, the on the move as well. And then we're gonna be posting it on the website so people have access to that.
And I'll also, Nicole put all that stuff in the drive. We have a ton of, uh, John had a ton of paperwork. It was all hard copies. So we can, maybe, uh, yeah, Nicole would be um, able to put some, I can email her, too. We can put some of that.
In our, in our relevant policies, like. Policy, I believe, or.
Some policies, at least. All right. I don't know those off the top of my head. All right, I'll have to look into the policies. John had a ton of documentation. He did a lot of research on it. So, um.
Yeah, I know there's one policy that says there's now left to arrest unless it's a felony.
Well, it's state law. Yeah, yeah, there's, yeah, there's like state law. He printed out for us. Um. Yeah, so.
We haven't had it accessible before in the meeting, would be great.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so we'll try to get that to drive. I, I can look into the policies, too. Jess, I don't know, Mike, if you don't have the SRO policies? He said, uh, Jess, Jess just said that there was, uh, SRO policies relating to, um.
This policy of whether or not a cop can come into the school to do any criminal investigation or anything like that. Their policy updated, uh, I think twenty-two.
Yeah, I believe it was KAP. I might have written it down somewhere. But I, I mean, if you just Google, I mean, I'm a little bit surgeon.
Surgeon, all right. So I'll make sure we put that policy in the drive, policy.
I think you can look at policy or something.
Or police, you know. Okay. Okay.
So the last pieces I wanted to share with you was the BMS lease. It was sent to us right before Christmas. I sent it out to our attorney. And she had the real estate attorney go through this very carefully. I sent both, we did both copies, the red line copies, you could see the changes they made. Um, and also the cleaned up copy of this. You know, I, the quote, what I would say to you is if there were questions at this point, you have, that I could direct to our attorney, who will be sent this to us, that's what I would wanna know. There's one area in particular, I think if we look in particular, I want. I think in particular, based on our conversations the last meeting, if we looked at section four, I want you to be able to see that, because I think that 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 clarifies for us, right, what does, what the building intention is, according to the town, where in school it's not in session. I know you liked that piece. I didn't know if we wanted to add anything further into that.
Carol, you're, you're good with that section four?
Say that to me.
You're okay with that section four?
I, I, I would prefer if we somehow said to the town, I mean, I think if they don't control over how that how that space is rented out, and I'm, and it's not even just, you know, to the good basketball, it could be so made longer, if the town's a rented for a home, or something like that. That it takes the onus off of us as far as controlling the renting of that space or what they expect from it. I don't know. I mean, if, if the school committee wants to put in there, that we would recommend that they have a custodian for those opportunities. Or we wanna say they don't have a good basketball, but they have it for other kinds of events. So they want, would ask you to think about that. I just. From that perspective, think about like, if they have an event there, what's going on? And scouts want to, and it's Saturday. If we don't have the custodian there, not being familiar with the building, perhaps, and they leave, it's not cleaned up, that, that all one of the custodians who come back on Monday could have to clean.
Scout's part of town, or are they their own, or is it, they're?
But the town, they could go to the town and say, we wanna use this on weekend. And the town could say, okay, I'll rent it to you. And that's if the school's not using it. The way this agreement reads is, the school's not using it, the town can do whatever they want with that. They can rent it out. They can have whoever they want in there.
We get the first, we get the first preference for that.
Yeah.
So the town, for the town events, not for some third party.
No, they can do it for all.
It does say town Berlin events, or Berlin sanction.
Sanction events, that you're not in real school, you can school usage. Way I read it is, yeah, scouts want to, and the town wants to support scouts, they do them.
If the town.
They should, if the town wants to.
And they should play it. Because they've been, right, I feel like they should be.
Something like that, but yeah, like, or like the lines of a monkey, or like you said, something like that, or, I don't know.
I don't know. I would say the town will probably add onto that, or. Because that was not in there originally, that may share views, the original one, is that right?
No, the original one did have a shared views clause.
This?
It did not have this. This is different.
It's worse. So it's more specific.
Yes.
Yes, definitely, yes, definitely more specific.
Yeah, this is way more specific.
And the other one's in the drive?
No, the original one's not in the drive. Have you guys seen that, though?
So it's hard to, I, I don't, I, I would say the town would, would take that and add to it then. But if you're saying that this is more detailed than what the town had in this time.
This is what our attorneys recommended.
I can just.
It seems reasonable to me for the town.
I think so, too.
Um, just, just to, here's, uh, picking up on that specific attorney that just said, um, attachment to the red line, most of the substance, substantive changes, concerns, maintenance and repairs, as we see that in there. While the initial draft was not expressly inconsistent with the regional agreement, he was looking at against a regional agreement. The left, the responsibility for payment and performance of repairs over 5,000 ambiguous. This redraft attempts to clarify those matters. The initial draft also provided both parties with the right to terminate the lease at any time, which is strong. And they just wanted to go through it and changes, comments. So like they said, we can go back. If you've got questions or concerns, I can go back to the attorney, uh, we have, or we'll give it to the town now to look at and see what their comments are as far as the changes. Because it looks, you know, you look at the red line draft, it's mind-boggling. So, so if they look at it, they'll say, okay, we agree with this. But we wanna go out with something else in here, then they'll come back to us again.
Can I ask, uh, John, if we say this where we go in effect, would this change the way you operate now?
I'm actually not aware of the words. Have you heard me to answer it? Carol, just.
All right, I just.
In the years past, it doesn't really change, at least my experience of being at Berlin Memorial, um, full coordinated with the town. So we coordinated that if the lines come in, we can use the cafeteria. They can't even use the cafeteria. But they helped the best that they could. Um, but again, I think, I think in my time, we had the custodian there. But we had the custodian there, the red cross, for example, came and did a walk drive, the custodian to go there. Um, so that's the only piece, again, that I would suggest we add in there by our own. Do we just leave it to the town?
I would say the town will probably, they're gonna be responsible for it. There'll be a process that they have. I don't think we need to add it because I think it's, I think it's a blanket thing, you know, for any group that comes in there and thinking the school's required, that's. At that point, it's no longer a school. So I think, yeah, so I would say defer, like, in my, in my opinion, I would say that should defer to the town.
And as long as it is, because they may have their own, they may have their own contract with people, you know, to clean, to do the cleaning, right, during that time period. And not utilize how school folks, if it's not working out, we probably have to go back and review this again. So.
There's a problem, yes. Where you bring it, you say, hey, break the lease agreement, you know, you're responsible for the building during this time we came here, it's huge mess. I think they're gonna have a blood rap, they didn't need a custodian there.
So, and I would say, I also think, too, as, as we're going through this, my recommendation would be to send this to them. Now, have them look at it, and then they come back with any questions. I don't think we should finalize it, but we're signing at this point.
No.
I would just say, see what they have to say now, let them bring it back to us, and then we can consider those possibilities and see what they have to say in the, in the, in the year.
Sounds reasonable.
Do the Mars people, was this the example of this? Now, this came from Mars. This, this came from the town initially, the original one.
I'm just curious, like, when they were here doing that, we, we actually sent us a lease agreement.
And that was a regional agreement we asked them to send. This is a lease agreement.
Yeah, during the agreement with the inter-regional district chambers.
Yeah, this is a lease agreement. That's.
No, I, no. I don't know. It was a lease agreement because we didn't have one, and so we wanted examples of ones from regional schools. I don't, the only reason I bring it up is because maybe there's something in those lease agreements that we would have modeled or just wanted to. You can ask.
We can still send this to the town if it has.
Yeah, and ask.
Yeah, this did come from higher conan laws. I would assume they would use.
They did originally, but this is.
No, he redlined it, yeah. So I would assume he. Yeah, they used all whatever regional, you know what I'm saying, whatever Massachusetts law, sounds like.
And again, this.
I mean, this is overpayment work, right?
And this was great. We could never do this on our own. I think that if we.
They did a ton of work on it.
Once we solidify this, as I said earlier, with Berlin, who else wants a little bit, they're smart, they're waiting for us to do the one with Berlin first, and then they'll take it and they'll make their adjustments. And I think that will be, um, we will be much more quickly with them. But I also wanna be respectful of the time for this to give it back, because everyone's, Kristen's asking about this as well. And I'm just gonna be, in some form.
Yeah, no, that's great.
All right, so do we wanna vote on this? We do need to vote. Um, Kim had recommended that we. Is this on the agenda?
It's on the agenda to vote on it, so. If that's the last thing, we're just voting.
Well, we gotta talk about the Hyannis field trip. Lisa's gonna present on that. But I want, while this is all fresh in our head, I wanna just vote. But I'm not seeing it on the agenda. My computer.
Yes.
All right. I'm on the wrong agenda. My bad. My computer died, sorry. Okay, here it is. All right, so could I have a motion to approve the redlined version of the Berlin lease agreement? That will go back to our, or that will go back to the town attorneys for review. It's not.
Don't you mean the vote?
They should be the same. All right, yes, let me refer to that. All right, so I, could I please have a motion to approve the vote version of the Berlin lease agreement draft that will go back to the town of Berlin for review, meaning this is not a final lease that is going to be signed? Like Julie, Jess? Any discussion? All in favor? I'm an I as well. All right, so that motion passes. So that will get sent back. Carol, we will send that back. Yep, awesome. All right, Lisa, do you wanna give us like three-second version of this Hyannis Student Council Field Trip and the, uh, afternoon chess club, so we can vote on those two things?
Yes. Um, so the, um, the Toronto Field Trip is something that actually I participated in. It's the, um, the Student Council, Massachusetts Association of Student Council Skate Conference at Hyannis. Um, it's a wonderful opportunity. Last year, the high school student council received the MASC Gold Council Award. And because of that, they have the privilege of bringing 16 students to the conference with a representation of, um, all categories. Um, the purpose, purpose of this trip is to support our Toronto High School Student Council in attending the state conference during this time. At the conference to represent the role of Asian leaders of skill development workshops, regional meetings, listen to motivational speakers, participate in, um, MASC student elections and network. Listen to motivational speakers, participate in, um, MASC student elections and network with students from across the Commonwealth. Um, we have had students, um, recently who have served at the state level, which is very impressive for our small school. With an increasing, pretty active council, this trip's become an invaluable experience for our student leaders, both fostering their skills as well as giving them inspiration. Um, an extra note, Toronto has had representation at this conference for over 10 years running. Um, this trip, um, will happen March 6th through, um, March 8th, um, this year. And this trip is funded, um, by family and student council. Student council is very actively fundraising, so the cost is normal.
Anyone have any questions about that, Carol?
I just have one question. I was just looking at the, the documentation here and for the requesting of the bus, I think the date might have been.
So we, um, because they're, um. They're still trying to get, um, all information. I don't know what we have uploaded, to be honest with you. I, I, I don't know what you have uploaded, but, um.
Well, it just said, it said February 6th instead of March 6th. It's on Hyannis Field Tripedia.
Right.
I don't know if that's gonna be like, the bus doesn't show up or, you know, shows up the wrong day.
Is it, I don't see that anymore.
Page 36 and 38. And then just scroll down to NRT plus.
It's because it's Emily McCarthy's report.
It's page 6.
Oh yeah, the date requested for, February 6th. That's a typo. Emily, so Emily will have to make sure that that is the date.
Yep. Yep, I'll make sh- um, make sure. Yeah, I, I usually don't get the NRT. In from, like, that's a separate request, so I wouldn't assume that.
Good catch, Lisa. Thank you. Alright, any other questions on that? That's great. I love these field trips, the opportunities for these kids. Alright, let's vote on that. Um, so, I'm sorry, I'm working up. Okay, so could I please have a motion to approve the Hyannis Student Council Field Trip from March 6th through March 8th? Julie, Jess, any discussion? Alright, all in favor? I'm an I as well. That motion passes. Alright, Lisa, did you want to talk quickly or briefly about the, um, Toronto After School Chess Evening Game Club?
Yes.
Or is that Sally? No, sorry, that's you.
Yes, um, so that, um, so this, this really is, um, a courtesy. Because it really is not, doesn't involve any funding. So, so this, it, you know, so just an opportunity for you to hear that, um, a parent came to me. Um, and we already are funding an after school chess club. With, um, students participating in so many sports. There was a parent who was actually hosting chess club at home. Um, for students who were also involved in sports and just couldn't, and were really interested in doing that. Um, she was feeling as though she wanted to make it, um, more inclusive by not having it at her home, to make it a more comfortable space. So she, um, just wanted to know if she could, um, she could host it in the cafe area outside of the library. Um, she's donating her time. Um, if the kids want to have snack, they bring snack. Um, she would have them sign in, um, with an emergency contact. You know, she's not asking for anything. She just wants to move from her home, so it's just more insightful. And in more space, providing, you know, more opportunity. So, uh, you know, we just, I thought I'd, you know, share this with the student council. I mean. So, um, if you have any questions, she was, she's been Corey and fingerprinted. So she has all that. There is already a custodian, um, you know, in place during the time, you know, for the evening. Run, you know, six, six to eight, a couple hours, you know, on Friday nights. And no Fridays during vacations, you know. Well, the, I, because students have sometimes here, but we can't guarantee that. Um, if there was any kind of weather, it would happen.
I love it. That's great. That's so great. They're trying to accommodate more kids and I love how many fun activity on Friday night. Yeah. Anyone have questions?
So mentioned she's Corey, but we require more than that.
Fingerprinting.
I said fingerprinting.
And is there another report?
Sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, Corey and sorry.
That's all together?
Yep. It was the fingerprinting, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah, absolutely.
So she's fingerprinted. Alright, great. Anything else? Alright, could I have a motion to approve the Toronto After School Chess Evening Game Club? So, Lisa, Jess, and, um, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, that motion passes. Great, thank you. Sally, last but not least, before we vote on all these policies, um, do you want to just briefly speak about that, um, the $500 donation from Unibank?
Sure. I was, um, given a contact from Unibank in Martinsville, um, saying that they oftentimes will donate funds to school systems. Um, if they, you know, feel that what you're doing is something that they stand behind. And so, um, I spoke to her in my proposal for, um, funds to cover the costs of food and materials for the month and portrait of graduate meetings that we have here. Um, and they donated $500.
That's great. Does anyone have any questions? I know, so they can have like snacks and meals. As we know, I'm sure just to feed that group, people one times $500, so. Yeah, that's great. Um, did anyone have any questions about that donation?
Do we have any documentation on this that we're supposed to have for cash donations?
I, I have a letter that we, we wrote to them in the proposal and also a letter that states exactly what we need to be funded for.
But do we have anything from them?
Saying they're donating, you mean?
Yeah.
They sent a letter, right?
Is this not?
I have an email confirmation and then I, then they sent it.
I still see it, so what are we voting on? This is the same, this is the same cash donation conversation we had from you. You need something from the donor.
We should have the check. She already, she already got the check.
Yeah.
So that should be in the drive.
Something from the donor, saying what they're donating, why they're donating, what they want. So that we don't have a company that we had in the past, come back three years later to say, I want my donation back. Because you didn't use it in what I thought.
I can find the email guarantee for the next time.
I guess $500, but $500, $500.
So I think we can.
Or rather than what they want.
I would say we can still vote on it, so you can use the money now. And then could you put that, or have Nicole get that email on the drive tomorrow? Are you okay with that?
No.
Alright, what does everyone else think?
I see your point.
I just tried to be by the book.
I, I don't know. I know, I know, but I feel like we, we can talk about it, but people don't know about it.
No, everyone in this room knows about it.
Yeah, I think this is a nice donation to be put toward that. I think I agree with my.
That was my fault. She has. It's my fault. She had template. She did a write, write-up, so.
I see the letter, I see the letter Sally's.
In addition to the write-up, we need something from the donor.
Moving forward.
Alright.
It's weird, it's like a third meeting in a row we've had this conversation.
No, so there's a disconnect somewhere.
Well, I think there's, we've been trying, so what Carol and I have talked about is we try to streamline it by making a template. And what we forgot about with that template is putting the actual documentation from the donor. So Sally wrote a report and then we're like, no, we gotta do this template. And I don't know, did I, I can't remember if I saw the template.
You're saying they sent an email.
Yeah, so that was, that was my bad.
I have an email, I just didn't think, I didn't.
Yeah, so the email exists. I think we're fine to vote.
I'll hold it to the drive right now. You have, you have your laptop there?
Yeah.
Like, we can do other votes once you have that.
Alright, we can new policy votes. Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
So that template will be updated to say additional, um, papers required, this.
Yes, sorry. I'm learning this stuff myself.
I don't know.
Yeah. Yep, yep. Um, I vaguely remember what happened last year, but I was not really involved in it. I heard about it, but yes. So under, I, that is an excellent point, and we also have a copy of the check. I remember last year seeing copies of checks in the drive. We could blackout people's account number, put a check copy in there as well. So we can see, alright, the funds were received. Sometimes they write on the check what it's for, but we should have a letter of intent from the donor or at least some type of documentation from the donor. So in addition to the template for donations, we need something from the donor.
Maybe we can add that somewhere on our website, a tab for donations.
What, what website?
Our, the New York website, yeah, right on there. Anyone wants to.
Great idea. Lana, donate.
I thought this was such a disaster.
Because I just wasn't involved in it, so it slips my mind. I'm gonna take.
Everybody in this room was involved in it. Everyone in this room was involved.
I was so determined to do this someplace to put the, every, make sure everything was organized and everybody had the same consistent way of tracking information.
Yeah, sorry. So no, you're right. I can't say you're, I can't say you're wrong. I, all I can say is I'm sorry and.
So there was a solution for it.
So there was a template, but the last thing, all we got is the template at the bottom of the template. Remember to attach donor. Carol made a new template. She's, she's distributed them to the principals. So the principals have like. Alright, let's vote on these policies and then we'll vote on the last thing. Alright.
I heard a letter about specified like what.
Donor intent.
Donor intent, yeah.
It's like Sally's letter that she wrote in there, but just from them.
Right. I'll have to get, I'm, I'm gonna have to contact her, cause I have an email from her, but it's got a whole bunch of other things and things that they didn't like about it, things they liked. Doesn't straight out say, so like, I'll have to get that.
Perhaps there's only a streamlined process is to create a form so that donors can just fill the one that we get in the drive.
I know. Yeah, we gotta do, make it easy, cause if it's too difficult, then people are gonna, I don't want, all right, nevermind, I'll. Someone has to get $1,000 bucks.
Surely they tell you something when they give you a check. Like, surely there's a letter or a note or a, posted in them, like, it's not a robust.
Yeah, she talks about this.
Sally applied for a grant though.
Yeah, someone was.
This is like a grant.
So you applied for a grant, so they don't have an approval letter that they sent?
It's not a grant, it was just a donation. I mean, it wasn't like a, I mean, she just asked.
But it was.
Yeah, donation, yeah. I love the.
Somebody told me I could call this person because they were willing to give us one. I called them and they said, donation.
Donation for.
And originally we were trying to get it from Laura, but then they, there was parts that they weren't, okay. So she don't be valid, so I can, we'll approve the $500 for supplies and materials. I have an email attached. But it's midst of a lot of other things. And I'll get, I can get you an official.
Okay, and then send it to Nicole and then we'll get it on the drive.
I'll get it.
Who's gonna make the form?
We already have.
No, 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 this is only for the donor.
Oh, wait, so the donor, we say donating $500 for, ding, 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 yeah, so.
Okay.
Because sometimes I'm more like, yeah, I'm not gonna write a letter.
Right.
No, it just has to be, yeah, so we just need the purpose of, the amount.
I mean, for current 2111.
Yeah.
Need something.
Yeah.
So, the, just the amount, purpose of donation, yeah, something very simple.
Can they actually, can they actually find it?
Well, or at least Sally and the principal, like, everybody's getting these donations can find it, so you, because you, it should also be downloadable. Some people are like, I don't want to go on your website. If somebody comes to John and says, I want to make a $5,000 donation. Sure, let me just forward you this form. It's a two second form, you just gotta fill out, so we have the intent of donation on, on, in writing. Or, sure, here's the link on our website if you prefer to download it and do it yourself or fill it out electronically. Yeah, we'll need Paul to.
Gets it up.
Good. Alright, so this is good. I still said, are you guys, do you still want to vote on this $500? You can vote now, but we should still vote. Lisa, how do you feel?
I'm okay voting.
Jess? So that they can use it for their next meeting, because we're not meeting until the 27th.
I would really love if you approved this because I've been finding this stuff myself. What was it, asking the school, the PTOs? One of them had already donated funds to pay for food, but.
Yeah, so buy dinner, yeah. Alright, could I have a motion, sorry. Yep, could I have a motion to approve the Unibank donation of $500 put towards the materials and supplies for our competency-based education and portrait of a graduate initiatives? Julie? Lisa? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm staying.
Great, I'm an I as well, so that's four. That motion passes. Guys, it's 7:30. Central office at 10 a.m. Okay, alright guys, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven policies that I'm gonna approve. Does anyone have any questions on any of these policies? Janelle, did you?
Um, I, there's a couple that I just have comments on.
Okay, alright.
Um, so going in order that they appear. Um, so my first one is, um, on IHBA. Lori and I exchanged some emails and I just provided the information that fits under that last line, 504 NO district to reflect local configuration. So it had like, it basically, we went back, I, Lori and I communicated, she went back to MASC to ask them what they intended there. They were basically looking for who in the district was responsible for section 504. Um, and so that listed my name, John's name, the principal's name, the 504 core name. So I just, I don't know if you want to have that included. That was something that Lori and I communicated.
I don't know the answer to that.
So that's just my note.
Did you want to have that included in that policy?
Then I think that's what they're asking for right there. They're asking for exactly what you said.
And isn't, it's not in there?
It's not what was printed off of the drive. Lori does have the, I did share the language with Lori. So, just some feedback on that. And then I have another one. Um, do you want me to move on?
Yes.
So IHB at homebound instruction. My suggestion, um, is to specifically reference the DESI form that is required. Um, which there's a title for it. It's Physician's Affirmation of Need for Temporary Home or Hospital Education for medically necessary reasons. Um, it's DESI's expectation that in order for us to implement, um, homebound instruction, home or hospital, that a physician would fill out that specific form. I think it would be helpful for it to be reflected in the policy.
Okay, so like a hyperlink for that policy?
Yeah, um, and if the form is available, um, even available online, it could be hyperlinked to the form. It's a readily available form and I think it's well known, but it would be a good idea to work with it.
Alright.
Hyperlinker, it might be good in case they update. You're not.
Okay, alright, so do you guys? So Mike, I'm asking you, because Lori's not here, do you want to wait on voting on those two and?
We can vote on it as is, if anybody wants to.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Alright, so I'll do each one separately then. Well, was there any more, Janelle? Sorry.
No, those are my suggestions for, um, added language.
Okay, so we're gonna amend, so for IHBA, um, amended with.
I don't know, or did it by name, like? Um, right, right, sorry, um.
Principal's names in the journey of the trails.
Yep, it's, it's really just who oversees the 504 program for the district. That was IHBA.
And then IHBF is going to be, um, amended to include a hyperlink for a physician's form?
Sure. So we know that we can access hyperlinks from the school committee online policy? I honestly don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we.
Alright, so it's to be amended to add a hyperlink to include a physician's form. What, is that correct?
Required. Yep, I mean, there's a technical name for it, but I think if you call it physician's form.
I'll just call it required physician's form.
Yep.
Alright, so, any, or Lisa, you got a question?
For IHBA, under the legal rep, is it listed in the section number?
Is it like just a typo?
Could be, yeah. Could be, yeah.
Do you want to wait, or do you want, I think it's okay, mine?
Would be amended with whatever the M.A.M.
Yeah, I just.
Whatever they say it is.
I have to dig it up and get some funky things going on here, I can't get to it right now.
But is there a way for us to approve it with the amendment, um, to correct the section per the?
Yeah.
MCA.
I just want one quick question, this is just a really annoying style thing, but why is all the body text folded in these? It just seems like.
I know they copied from MASC.
Good question.
I don't know. All right, anything else? Okay, could I have a motion to approve policy IGA curriculum development? So. Julie? Jess? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, that motion passes. I have a motion to approve policy JJH dash E dash one, educational field trip application. So. Julie?
Second.
Lisa? Any discussion? All in favor? I'm an I as well, that motion passes. Okay, so, uh, yeah, could I have a motion to approve policy IGB's support services programs? Julie? Jess? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, that motion passes. Could I have a motion to approve policy IHBA, Programs for Students with Disabilities, amended to include the names of the district personnel who oversees the five oh four plans for regional and principals? And also amended to include the correct formatting based on the MASC guidelines?
The legal reference section number.
The legal reference section number, amended to include the MASC legal reference section number. So. All right, Julie? Jess? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, that motion passes. Could I have a motion to approve policy IHBF homebound instruction with the amendment to include a hyperlink for the required physician's form? So. Julie and Jess? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, I'm an I as well, that motion passes. Could I have a motion to approve IHBH, Alternative School Programs? Jess?
Second.
Julie? Any discussion on that? All in favor? I'm an I as well, that motion passes. Last one, could I have a motion to approve policy IJ, Instructional Materials? So. Julie? Lisa? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm an I as well, that motion passes. All right, future agenda items, we. We talked about the Student Success Committee handling the handbooks, we talked about Carol's, but your report is going to be at our next meeting, we're going to have another lengthy meeting. I know, we, I think that's funny. Carol, huh? Um, so we, we do need to talk about a survey, it's come up a few times, I'm inclined to kick that back to the Student Success Committee, Lori's not here to speak on behalf of the Superintendent Eval Committee, so we can, do you want to talk about that next time when she's here and see if she wants? Yours, that's up for me to do it, or if you want to kick it to Student Success, or Carol, did you want to say something?
I do, just because we were right back the tip of Tohonto sending out student parent survey.